Welcome to the January 11, 2022 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, can we have the closed session item?
Closed session for today, January 11. We have one item pursuant to Government Code 54957.6, Conference with County Designated Labor Negotiators, Judy Hawkins, Nick Marvin, and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations: Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union.
Any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Anything in the room? With that, we'll move into closed session. Thank you. Welcome back to the Tuesday, January 11, 2022 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Will everyone please join me for the salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have a report out on closed session?
Report out of closed session for today, January 11. Item 1 pursuant to Government Code 54957.6, Conference with County Designated Labor Negotiators, Judy Hawkins, Nick Marvin, and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations: Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now on to the big things, election of Chair and Vice Chair. Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, election of the 2022 Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors, I would like to say that it's been an honor to serve the county of this last year as Chair of the Board of Supervisors, to hold the gavel. I want to thank, first of all, the Board of Supervisors. It's been a pleasure to work with you all this year. You know, from my personal perspective, even through our disagreements, different perspectives, this has been one of the healthiest boards to work with that I've seen in a very long time. And, you know, this last year, you know, we stepped to business, I've had some personal issues that come up, you've all been very supportive through both avenues, and I just want to say I appreciate you all. And that goes on to also staff. You know, staff's been supportive of all the board members as we move forward, and with, you know, overall, I think this is the way we should lead, and I appreciate you all, and I hope to be able to pass that on to whoever is up next. Shall we provide the opportunity for public comment prior to anything else? Or is there any?
Sure.
Public comment? That was easy. Mr. Toffenelli, you have your light on.
Yes, Supervisor Stoppard, and I want to thank you for the year that you put in. It was a great year, and again, I echo your sentiments and your comments about staff and this board working together. It has been, some of the tenacious ones prior that Jack and I had sat on, it was a very quiet year and a very good year, and I thank you for your services. I would like to nominate Amanda Follendorf at this time for Chair.
We have a motion by Mr. Toffenelli.
I have a second for the staff member colleague. Thank you. I'll make the second.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I didn't hear either way, Amanda. Are you opposed to that?
Aye.
The passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Congratulations, Ms. Follendorf. I really, really enjoy working with you this last year, and I look forward to your leadership this next year. So with that, I will hand the gavel over. Hopefully, we can get a name that suits you on it very soon.
Next up is the selection of Vice Chair for 2022. And, oh, thank you. Next up is the selection for Vice Chair for 2022. With that, public comment? No? We'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Graham Mendy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and congratulations. I look forward to a good year of working with you, and thank you. Former Chair Supervisor, I agree with you. I thought we had a lot of work done last year. And to Gary's point from the earlier boards where he had dark hair and I had hair at all, we lost it. I would like to nominate Supervisor Toffenelli as Vice Chair.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I would like to second that motion. Thank you, and I want to just thank all the board for sticking with succession. This is a good way to work together. I appreciate you all, so with that, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? 5-0.
And I want to thank Supervisor Graham Mendy for the motion and Supervisor Stoppard for the second. Thank you.
Well, you're lucky I didn't do it.
And the lady on the end down there, Supervisor Callaway, thank you.
Good luck, Ms. Follendorf.
Sign it off.
No, thank you for the nomination and the support. I really am thankful for the confidence that the rest of the board has in me for this next year, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you and with staff. And I think it's going to be, if anything was like last year, I think it's going to be a good year. And thank you to Supervisor Stoppard for allowing me to hang out along the way this past year and learn the ropes and helping me transition from other local government into the county local government. So it is appreciative.
Well, you're a tremendous amount of support, so you didn't just get to hang out, we put you to work.
That you did. Okay, with that, I believe a clerk wants to take a five-minute break so we can do some movement in the room. Good, okay. Okay, good morning, everybody. So next on the agenda is staff announcements. So we have Ms. Medina and we have the sheriff here. Look, you can come on up.
Well, good morning, Sheriff Follendorf. Congratulations and my condolences all at the same time. And congratulations, Vice Chair Toffenelli, and good morning to the rest of the board. Ms. Callaway, no rattlesnakes at your place lately?
No.
Okay.
If I can help it, I'll let you know.
There you go. I just wanted to bring something to your attention, that's something that I'm working on for the county. It is called Alert First, Alert FM. This is a unit, as you can see by the palm of my hand, it's not a very big unit. I'm working with a company, let me see here, the name, Global Security Systems. Emador County, ourselves, Tooleme County, and I believe Mariposa County haven't reached out to the sheriff down there just yet, but I believe the four of us are going to be involved in trying to put this program together. If you go to Alert FM, if you Google that, you'll see that Sheriff Cory Honi has started this program up in Butte County. Shasta County has just started it also, or they're in the process. What it is, is this is a system that works off of FM radio band. So if you get FM radio service, you will get an alert on this unit. It does an audio, it has a blinking light, and it also sends a message across the screen. So if we have PSPs coming, if we have road closures because of snow, it works for fire, it runs through the sheriff's office, and we have what they call a geofence, we can single out certain areas to notify them with this unit. This is not by any means a fix-all forever bridge or any other system that we have in place. This is in addition to. I've talked to a couple of the supervisors about this briefly. I'm just bringing it to you because now I have the unit in my hand, and I want to give you an, this is coming, it's something I'm going to bring to you. I don't know any numbers, so don't ask. I know that Sheriff Honi spent about $500,000 to put the program in place. PG&E helped him out with the cost of these units to get it out to people that are in the Level 2 PSP areas. So I just want to bring it to your attention that it's something that I'm looking at to enhance our capabilities of getting to people when we have an emergency. What's nice about this unit is, again, it works off of FM radio stations, so if you have a, it's, you plug it into an outlet, and it has a battery in it. So if you get evacuated, you can take this thing and put it in your pocket and take off with it, and it will alert you when you can go back to your area. So it has some great capabilities. Power goes out, cable goes out, cell phone towers go down, this is still going to work. Again, we have a very diverse topography in our county, so it may not work in all areas. We'll be doing some testing on it. But again, I just wanted to kind of give you guys a heads up of something that I'm working on for the county. Any questions I can answer at this time?
Sheriff Basilio, excuse me, Madam Chair. When, for example, in the Ebbets Pass corridor, which has now happened two years in a row, people are out of power for four to eight days.
Right.
So what do they plug it into, and what is the battery life? I mean, I really like the concept.
Yeah. It's a AA battery, goes in the back right here, so it's going to last for days. You can, if it goes dead, you just put a new battery in it. So it's very capable. What part I didn't tell you is that the program goes off of FM radio stations. We have an FM radio station in Jackson, we have one in West Point, and we have the one over in Sonora. There are other radio stations that they're in the process of combining with, so obviously the more radio stations, the more capabilities they have of getting to the service.
So this is just information coming to a person, not, could you please evacuate me? Or could you bring me fuel? Or could you bring me food?
No, this is just for, just information. It's one-way. It just tells you, hey, there's going to be a PSPS, or the roads are closed in this area, or you need to evacuate your area. So it's just a one-way radio, and it's also an FM radio. So if you want to listen to music, you can listen to music on it. So, but it's just a one-way information. And again, the nice part about it is that you'll be able to put it in your pocket when you evacuate and still know when you can go back, and you're not wondering when you can go back. We will notify you.
So in the, excuse me, what we had in Ebbets Pass, I'm assuming in Jack's area, but he made it clear I can't speak for his area.
Can't make a motion for my area.
I'll try, though. Okay. I've talked to the road department about putting like a GPS system in the trucks. People just want to know that they're out there, and where are they? You know, they're in Meadowmont or Lakemont or whatever, Camp Connell. And without that, that system won't be able to say that the road crews are out.
Well, again, this is going to run through the sheriff's, through our sheriff's dispatch. So if there's information, and I've been talking with John Osborne with OES about this, so he's very aware of what's going on with this. So if there's something that OES needs to push out, we can push it out through this program. So, and I don't know if there's enough calls that said, hey, are you going to plow Sierra Parkway? And John wants us to put something out in that aspect, hey, we know Sierra Parkway has been plowed, we're going to be there, you know, as soon as we can, or whatever the case may be, we can push that out through this program. Again, it flashes a light, it does an audio, but it does give you a printout like a text message, so you can read what it says. So it's only, it's only, that's what I'm looking for, it's only limited in what we put into it.
Got it. So if somebody feels they need to be evacuated, or they're running out of fuel or food, they still call 6500.
They still call, yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Dibasilia. I'll bring more questions up when you bring it back to the board.
I will, and again, I'm working on this program right now with these four counties. We're trying to get some numbers, because we know all of our boards are going to be interested in numbers, but once we get that, I just want to kind of give you a heads up that we are looking at something. The sheriff's office, again, is taking a step ahead to try and advance our community in its safety.
Good news.
All right. And again, congratulations, Ms. Follendorf and Mr. Toffenelli. You guys have a great day.
Thank you.
I think I deserve congratulations for where I'm at now.
You do, because you're not in the hot seat anymore.
Okay, Ms. Medina.
Good morning, everyone. Congratulations Supervisor Follendorf and Supervisor Toffenelli, and thank you Supervisor Ben Stoppard for your past year of service. Good morning, other board members, Deputy Clerk of the Board, CEO, Lactatero, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. So the Environmental Management Agency would like to wish everyone, first of all, a very happy New Year. Our Animal Service Department adopted out several pups in the month of December, including Osita, Clark, Ranger, Happy, Blue, Mongo, and Booze. They are now in their forever homes. We also adopted out several kitties, including 12, actually, Charlie, Chester, Sadie, Fiona, Clara, Angelina, Rugby, Lexi, Leo, Karina, and my favorite, Slavernia Shirley. Does everybody remember that show? So Animal Service, along with our Friends of Calaveras Animal Services, are working to bring another great year of free rabies clinics and also microchips. The first one is to be held in March, and details on that particular clinic will follow. However, that clinic will be held here at the Government Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Is there any other staff announcement?
There are no other staff announcements.
Okay. With that, we move on to public health update. Ms. on?
Good morning, Madam Chair Follendorf. Congratulations on your selection, and Supervisor Stoppard, thank you so much for the opportunity to work with you in this past year, so I look forward to this new board and how it's functioning. As you can see, we've had the COVID-19 updates ready for you today, January 11. And with me today, we have your Health Officer, Dr. Ramon Ramirez, we have our Mark Twain Medical Center CEO, Doug Archer, and Deputy Director for Public Health, Corey Rodriguez. So our first one to do is go through the COVID-19, by the numbers. You can see that we are at over 4,800 confirmed cases, 70 of those are active and recovered, we're almost at 4,700. Now, we are capped at 94 deaths, of course, we hope to keep there, two active hospitalizations, and as far as boosters, we're now over 8,700 boosters that have been given. The percent of eligible vaccinated 5- to 11-year-olds in Calaveras County is now over 4.5%, and the percent of those aged 12 to 17 years old is at 30.5%. New guidelines that we presented starting in December have been extended through February 15th for the state of California. This has to do with the cold season, we want to further mitigate spread and the overwhelm of our hospitals, so these guidelines include that universal masking in all public indoor locations, and this is for every one of us, vaccinated or not vaccinated. There are those shortened timeframes for testing for unvaccinated persons who want to attend a mega event. So it used to be 72 hours, it's now shortened. The testing requirement, when you enter and re-enter California from outside of the state, the guidelines establish that you should test at three to five days after self-quarantine, and then, once cleared with a negative test, can resume your normal activities. That, like I said, goes through February 15th until further noted. COVID-19 vaccines continue to be very highly available to our community. I know last time we reported, we had that devastating news that we were not able to maintain our vaccine ban. The state of California has changed its stance, and they are reinvesting in the importance of access. So the vaccine ban is returning, it will be here this week, starting on January 14th. The first day, we have a brand-new team coming in from out of state, they will start a very small startup clinic to get acclimated to the area and orient to our process. They open daily, except for Wednesdays. We do that so that we can have weekend access. We will now have static locations in designated spots throughout our community, rather than having to look them up and seeing whether they're up week to week or day to day. Local pharmacies and the otherwise known family wellness center continues to offer vaccines as well, and you can see that here on the slide. Those appointments, of course, are always made through my turn.ca.gov. Booster shots are now available for everyone 12 years old and older. Now, I know there's always questions around, when do I get my booster? If you have the Moderna series, after six months. If you have the Pfizer series, after five months. Johnson &amp; Johnson, only after two months, and we strongly recommend that you go with a Pfizer or a Moderna booster. Testing, now rather than reading this complex bitly, I will tell you, you can go straight onto the county's website, COVID-19, to register for testing, but you always can walk right in. January 12th, tomorrow, will be at the San Andreas Library, our morning, at Friday by Springs Fire Protection District. We, at the Calaveras County Public Health Department, did receive an allocation of rapid tests. This was to ensure equity throughout our community so that access can be had and testing can be done. So those were distributed through predetermined points that provided access for the most vulnerable community members. So through Child and Adult Services, within the Human Services, 900 kits were distributed, or at least made available to distribute. The Resource Connection, through the Women, Infant, and Children's Program and the Food Bank received kits. Libraries have kits to distribute, ISTAS A12 Agency on Aging to meet our aging population, for those receiving common ground transportation, and the Mark Twain Medical Center for Congregate Meal Care. We also handed out 340 of those test kits for those who came in for testing. We are hoping to continue to receive more. What we understand from the California Department of Public Health is that this should be ongoing, but we do wait for further instruction and those further allocations to come. In summary, as you know, for two years, we have been actively responding to this COVID-19 pandemic. All of the programs, the public health, have been on board. The last time we reported out, we were eager to pivot, we put all the pieces together in order to do that, and then now entering into our winter surge, which Dr. Ramirez and Mr. Archer will be able to talk with you about in a moment. We continue to have vaccines available, we continue, as I've said, to serve us through the vaccine van. Moving forward, we are pivoting right back to a full-time COVID response, and now you probably wonder where we are with Omicron cases and hospitalizations. So, Dr. Ramirez?
Good morning. So this chart was taken from the California Department of Public Health, and as you will see, our rates of COVID have sharply increased since around Christmas time. The next slide here shows the different variants that's also now available in the California Department of Public Health, showing the most prevalent strain at current time is the Omicron. So we'll see that in early, mid-December, there was a downtrend of the Delta variant, and there was a sharp uptake in the Omicron variant. And it's estimated that in California, nationwide, the CDC had previously said about 97% of cases are estimated to be due to Omicron. In California, that estimate is somewhere in the mid-70s at present time.
Is there anything further that you have, Dr. Ramirez?
Nope, you covered everything else.
Okay. Mr. Archer, is there anything you'd like to add?
Are there any questions by the board?
Supervisor, Chair, Office of the Central, Mr. Archer, compliance is okay.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes, good morning, Cory.
Good morning.
Going back to your slide on COVID-19 vaccine availability, and going to the bottom of the page about getting booster shot as soon as eligible, I've already got my booster shot, but does this mean every six months, you should get a booster shot? Or if you're on Moderna or Pfizer, every five months, go back and get one, and the J&amp;J every two months? Is that what it's saying?
Oh, no. Dr. Ramirez, would you like to address the nature of boosters?
Sure. So in a sense, the boosters are continuously being evaluated by their manufacturers for coverage of the most current strain and the effectiveness of that booster for the strains. What we do know is that at present time, boosters are effective for the Delta, definitely, and the Omicron, if it's sooner versus later. So the answer to your question is, we just don't know yet if this is going to be an every-six-month picture, or if this is going to be just this one booster. Unfortunately, we are all witnessing science in real time. Best-case scenario, everybody gets vaccinated, everybody gets the booster, and hopefully it'll kind of carry us through this current surge without more information to still follow, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Supervisor Graham Mendy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Cory, and for the presentation. I have three questions. The first one is regarding the rapid availability of testing. We've got this distribution process here. Do schools have adequate rapid tests, and does the hospital as well?
So schools do receive their own distribution of tests. We also, at the Department of Public Health, was also provided tests so that every student can have two tests when they re-entered school after the holiday break, that we distributed as well. As far as the hospital goes, you have Mr. Archer here who can report out on that.
Does he have enough rapid tests?
Those were rapid tests, yes.
Doug?
Yeah, good morning, everybody. We do have rapid test availability at the hospital. Flight chain's been kind of tough on test kits. We just got another shipment yesterday. We are trying to reserve our rapid tests for inpatients, for clearing people for surgery, and also for testing our own staff that are showing symptoms. So we don't have rapid capability to offer rapid tests out to the community at this point. So we don't have rapid capability to offer rapid tests out to the community at this point, because we just don't have the capacity to handle that. And again, reserving that more for acute needs. We do offer testing at our San Andreas Clinic. Generally, we have about ten to fifteen slots a day. And then, one of the comments I wanted to mention to the team here this morning is, one of the challenges we have, as you saw, we don't have two hospitalizations right now, so that is very high. But our ER is significantly impacted. As we've seen with Omicron, it's a little less security. So often, that turns out to be an ER visit, but they're very much impacted. And what's really hurting is, we have a lot of people, a lot of community members just showing up for a test in our ER. And they're frustrated, because of course, they're the lowest faculty in the waiting room, so we serve them last, so we take care of the patients. They're frustrated, and our staff are tied up with testing for patients that aren't actually sick. So that's one of the challenges we are facing. We've been trying to educate people to that when they show up just. But if you go to ER, it's definitely a packed house right now.
I just want to make sure that we're talking about these tests, and I want to make sure that, I'm sure public health is keeping a close dialogue, because if somebody's not using their tests and other people are, we got to make sure we shift the resource. But I'm sure you guys are on that way. Second question I've got is, the vaccine van is back in circulation, which is great. I remember last time we caught up on this, there was a significant cost, and I want to make sure that the federal government continues to cover that. Is that the case?
Yes, it's been fully paid for by the state. Is that a federal drawdown? Ms. Robles? Yes. So no cost to the local department.
Great. Third question is, I had the experience the other day of seeing, watching one of our key employees get quarantined and then, or being exposed, and then sent home for ten days. I'm probably like everybody else, I'm pretty much confused between the CDC and what rules we're setting, and I'd like to make sure that we are, we have, we have more choice but to follow Cal OSHA rules. And I wanted to see if they are updating, or are we still, a sentiment to play home for a brush with somebody who might be COVID-positive for ten days is a major burden on the county and the services we provide. So I just want to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do, but are these rules getting updated?
Yes, I know, but it's a constant conversation, and of course, we've got Judy here with the Cal OSHA piece, but I do want to let you know that Colin and I sit on calls several times a week that outline review guideline changes and the connection between Cal OSHA, Fed OSHA, and CDPH and the CDC. But it is a constant conversation, and each of those arms has their own authorities. But this happens to run away in on the Cal OSHA?
Yes, thank you. So I do want to clarify, we do not exclude employees from work for a brush with another employee. They do have to meet the Cal OSHA requirements of being within six feet of a positive employee for more than fifteen minutes in a twenty-four-hour period. And when we do the contact tracing for the employees, we make sure that it is a true exposure, because we know that it is a hardship among the departments to have employees excluded from work. That's why we do make sure that we are constantly reminding employees that social distancing is kind of the key here, staying six feet away from others, wearing your face covering, making sure the other people you're around are wearing their face coverings. Now, with the recent Cal OSHA ETS changes, we will be pushing out a new CPP at the end of this week, and the county has the right to go either the less strict five days, or they can decide to stick with a more strict quarantine period for the employee.
Is that a new fourth decision?
I have been working, I was working with the CAO, the Assistant CAO, and the County Council on what is the best way to go, and our CPP is not brought before the board?
Okay. I'm just, we're watching nurses and everybody get called back into hospitals on short notice, and we're sending people home for ten days. So I'm looking forward to that revision at the end of the week.
Thank you.
Supervisor Toffenauer, are you done?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Geremendi, for bringing up the rapid test question. We know, you know, supply has not met demand. So everyone's vying for position on collecting those. My questions are more towards Mr. Toffenelli's question. He asked about the six months, are we going to get another one? CDC's starting to publicly talk about a fourth booster, or a fourth shot for a booster. And also, CDC, watching the news more recently in weeks, is talking about an Omnicron vaccine. So, and I'm watching numbers coming back from hospitals that even the people being admitted, percentage-wise, is dramatically changed with the Omicron variant when it comes to the vaccine. You know, Mr. Archer, are you seeing anything to those ends? I mean, or are you able to, or do you test for the different variants even at Mark Twain? Is that, do you have that ability?
Unfortunately, we don't have the ability to delineate between variants. We can only test if you're positive for COVID.
All right. That's fine, thank you very much. It just addresses concerns as this, as we progress through these years, it's looking like it's becoming more like the flu, in my mind. This, Mr. Ramirez, the ability for different mutated COVID's very high, is it? Is it very high?
We've gone through quite a gamut of great letters to show the different variants, yes.
Yeah, no, and I see it there. You know, is it concerns moving forward? Do you think there's the potential that we'll be looking at different vaccines in the future?
Viruses are very good at what they do, and that is to spread. But viruses were not good at what they did, they wouldn't be very good viruses. And unfortunately, this one is definitely making its way through the world. I wish I had better outlook for what's going on in the near future, but the reality is, as long as there are sick people with this particular virus, it's going to continue to spread until we can figure out how to halt it. Again, as with my previous statement, what we're all witnessing is science in real time. There are countless researchers and institutions, doctors, scientists, that are looking not just at vaccines, but other therapeutics to stop this virus in its tracks. And unfortunately, we're just, we're just not there yet. So we're all trying to do the best that we can. We're keeping up with everybody's recommendations at a local level, at a nearby county level, at a state level, at a federal level, and at a world level.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Thank you, Ms. Poldark.
Supervisor Howie?
Ms. Allen, I'm going to just put the questions out there. The kits at the county libraries, is that for anyone, or is that for a specific audience? And the kit, is it something that somebody's watching you do it, or it's just like a home test?
We're going to have Ms. Robles respond to those questions. Great questions.
Hi, Supervisor Howie. So all of the kits are what are called over-the-counter kits. They actually, each box contains two tests, and they're not monitored. There are clear directions in the box, and there is a website that people can go to as well, but the directions are pretty simple. And as far as how those kits are distributed at the library and elsewhere, that is at the discretion of the organizations that we have given them to, with the caveat that we have expressed that the kits are really intended for those most in need. And so the organizations that we've been collaborating with, we trust their judgment in doing that. I hope that that answers the question.
Yes, except, we're now asking library staff to make that decision. And I don't know that they're trained for that. I'm just kind of putting it out there, because I get, as I'm sure all of you do, many questions on where can I get a rapid test? And most of the questions that I get or call are for people who are going to be traveling, and they need it within seventy-two or twenty-four hours prior. So these are just over-the-counter home tests that you could buy at Rite Aid or CVS, et cetera, correct?
Absolutely. Correct. Sorry. And also, if people are interested in traveling, a lot of the restrictions, it depends on what they're doing for traveling, but a lot of the restrictions, at least lately, and that may change, the antigen test would not be appropriate, because you don't get a print out of anything, it's literally just for your own information. And so for those that are traveling, might be more interested in getting a PCR or purchasing the over-the-counter ones that are proctored.
Right. So will those over-the-counter that are proctored be available for, under the testing, rapid testing program?
At this time, I can't predict the future, and I can't really say. I do know that the Biden administration has said that insurances will be paying for rapid tests at home, and I know a lot of that is unfolding. So more information will come, but at this point, I don't have anything further to report.
Okay. Because I think that's a need, if we could somehow find a way to fill it, that would be the, the other is, on the vaccine van, will they be allowed to do testing? Or just vaccines?
I'm sorry. At this point, because it's a new team, we're actively and vigorously working with the state and the company that provides the vaccination, the staff of the vaccination van, to ensure that those folks have been adequately trained to do testing. All of the teams that come and work in those vans have various levels, and they come from all around the country. And so if we've been in contact with scrappers to ensure that they are up to speed on all the different vaccines, on the pediatric vaccine, I mean, there's a lot of different things, and then testing is one of those things. If they are not up to speed on the testing that we use, the PCR testing that we use, and possibly even rapid testing, if we get that okay from the state, then we will, if they're not up to speed on those, then we will ensure that they're trained and we'll get them to be able to do testing as quickly as possible, for sure.
Okay. So I heard you say that there'd be a possibility that the vaccine van will be able to do PCR testing and rapid testing, if you can pull it off?
Yeah, it's not even about us pulling it off, it's about getting the approval and the resources from the state. Our role in working with the folks who provide vaccines through the mobile van is to absolutely set them up for the biggest success possible. Our goal, as I think it is everyone's goal on this call and in our community, is to keep our community as safe as possible, and right now, that does involve testing. So we're doing everything we can, with all the resources that we can, to ensure that we're getting testing out to everyone. I do want to say, though, that I, we have some staff here who have family members who went to Sacramento and other parts and stalked them and different things, tried to wait in line for four hours to get tested. We do not have that in Calaveras County. We, our testing group, because it's public health stuff right now that are doing testing, are really efficient at what they do, so maybe a slight wait, but there's not a four-hour wait. And so we do really encourage our community to come out to the testing sites. And there will be one on Friday, there's one actually tomorrow at the San Andreas Library, and the one on Friday is in Bellis Springs.
I have one more question. Does Cal OSHA designate what kind of masks we should be wearing, like N95 versus a beautiful cloth mask that goes with my outfit?
So I will let Judy answer the Cal OSHA question, but CDPH has put down guidance that just went into effect again, or was expanded. Well, CDPH recommends that people no longer use cloth masks unless they have a surgical mask underneath them and then use a cloth mask on top. CDPH recommends that folks use N95 masks or surgical masks, and then, I know Judy can talk about the OSHA part.
Thank you.
On the Cal OSHA, their ETS, they have not changed their requirements yet regarding the cloth mask. You cannot use single-layer mask or anything like a bandana. It has to be a mask that fits well, and that you can't see light through. So basically, kind of a light test to make sure that it is well enough woven to help. Now, as Colin said, there has been new guidance out very recently, and so I will be working with County Council, because our policy currently refers back to the CDPH guidelines regarding face coverings.
So does the county pay for that, Judy? I mean, if we say we're going to require N95, just being an example, will the county have those for county staff?
Yes, and right now, our current policy states that any employees that request an N95 mask, we do have to provide it to them. And I know that this week, Facilities has put together basically a kit for all of the departments that need face coverings, that need making sure that they have the proper sanitizing items, and so we are providing all of that for the departments. And we also have a help desk ticket system to make sure that they are receiving what they request.
Thank you, thank you, all of you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other questions by board members? I have a follow-up question to Supervisor Howie. With the N95, are we doing fitting for employees to make sure, fit tests?
So we do, it depends on how they're using the N95 face coverings. And so those employees that are using it as PPE, so for example, we have social workers that may go into, have to go into a household that's COVID-positive, they have been fit tested. But if they are using the N95 as just a more protective face covering, then we are not requiring the fit test. So it depends on what they're using it for.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other question from the board, is there any public comment?
Yes, we have Vicki Ranki.
Okay, Ms. Ranki?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yeah, I just have some questions to bring out. I know this has been going on for over two years. We obviously know a lot more about this COVID and how it's spreading and all of these things, and it seems that we're still right back at the same point we were two years ago. But anyway, I just wanted to know if there is a chart that compares past winter flus in Calaveras County to what's happening now with COVID? And what does the flu season look like this year? Is it all being put under COVID? Or is there a separation between the flu and COVID? Because we all know, we go through this every winter, where we're all getting sick with something. So I wanted to see if there is some chart, or if somebody could put that together for the public. The other thing is, you didn't mention how many infections are in the vaccinated, because we also have learned that the vaccinations do not stop this COVID from affecting peoples or infecting people. So, you know, we want to know, you know, how many of these people So, you know, we want to know, you know, how many of these people are then vaccinated? And I know they say, well, you don't get it as bad. Well, I don't know if that's true or not with the Omicron. And then that's my next question is if we can't test for the variations of COVID, then how do we know someone has Omicron? And what does that all mean? So anyway, those are just questions I'm sure others have. And we keep shutting down or making people wear masks and hurting our children in schools over this. So I would hope that more research can be put into it so that we can do a more logical response. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
There's no further online public comment?
Any public comment in the room? Okay. With that, and there's no other board after that. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Thank you, Doug. Thank you, everyone. Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you, board.
And then clerk, we'd like to take a five minute break, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We had some technical difficulties. We finally got resolved. So we will go back. Next on the agenda is recognition and acknowledgement. Clerk?
A proclamation from the innovation office. A Dr. Proclamation recognizing county employees for their hard work supporting the recovery efforts from the December 2021 winter storm event.
To bring Sheriff Walten Dorff, congratulations. Members of the board, Summer Nikotero, Assistant CAO. I'm bringing forward a proclamation today. It's sponsored by Supervisor Stoffer in seeking to recognize the county staff who rose to the occasion when they were called to support the major storms over the holidays. The recovery effort obviously was immense, and while we realize that we still have work to do and that we hope there are more storms to come, and we'll expect the same level of service with those, we did want to take this time to recognize the employees that stepped up, their willingness to work, their teamwork, and the efforts that they made to make sure that those recovery efforts were done as quickly as we were able.
Thank you, Ms. Nikotero. As she relayed, I asked this to be brought forward my last action as chair prior to, earlier today. So with that, I'll move forward. Whereas in the last week of December 2021, an extreme winter storm hit the county of Calaveras, and whereas record snowfall took down countless trees and power lines, and whereas the community needed support to clear roads of snow and debris, and whereas despite planned holiday vacations and personal commitments, plow drivers, road crews, and public outreach staff rose to the occasion, working long hours in the cold temperatures and inclement weather to clear roadways, remove fallen trees, check in those in need, and staff warming centers. And whereas without the dedication of our county staff and the many volunteer organizations, fire departments, and utilities working with them, recovery from the December 2021 winter storm would have taken much longer and left thousands of households stranded. You know, the people with the feet on the ground that make this success, they know the spots and the areas where, you know, a lot of us in the higher parts of government or even administration don't know, and they know how to navigate the elements. And, you know, they gave up time through these holidays, whether they believe or celebrate them or not, to, their time with their families. And we would completely appreciate the dedication of long hours and work with that. So with that, I will ask if there's any other board member statements or questions? Public comment?
Good morning. Robert Pakenger, Calaveras County Public Works Department. I'm probably not the person you'd like to see here this morning. You'd like to see some of the, our crew that are actually, that were actually out there working, but they show up at seven in the morning and they're already out there cutting trees and fixing potholes and so forth and so on. So they're already out there. I'm here to represent. So Supervisor Stopper, thank you very much for the gratitude of the board. Also, thank you for the gratitude. I've been here for many years and it's very rare when the recognition comes down to the workers that have done a lot for many, many years. Our road crews and extra higher personnel worked 12 hours a day. They had a couple shifts working, so it was a 24 hour operation. And we can't forget the mechanics. The mechanics were also working there alongside, making sure that the equipment was operational the whole time. They were in there 24 hours a day. Those that were on vacation were called in to come to work and they came to work. We had crews from all of our yards working at the distressed areas up in West Point and up in Dorrington, everywhere. They were working. Everybody was, that could come to work was working. We had support from our office staff also. We had people manning our phones, making sure that the information was taken care of appropriately. We passed it on to our partners in PG&E. This year, we had developed a really good communication and partnership with PG&E. So those problems of trees tangled up with power lines were minimized. We were able to tell them where the lines were. They were able to reach the lines. Everybody gave up part of their holiday, but everybody was happy to do it. I could tell you that our road crews were very concerned about the citizens that were still up there, trapped by snow. They're trying to get access to them as quickly as they could. And that concern is evident in the work that they do. So I am greatly proud of them and also very appreciative of you and the attention that you have given to our department. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Cory Allen, Health and Human Services Agency Director. I too want to thank you so much, Supervisor Stopper and Assistant CAO Nikotero. The team at the Health and Human Services Agency is tasked with stepping in when we need to do a mass care shelter or a temporary evacuation point. So a resiliency center, like our OES chief came up with this round, was really critical. And what happens in Health and Human Services is not only responding in an immediate moment, like we need to be there today by noon, very fast. They're simultaneously dealing with the other elements of human condition during a tragic time, such as having no power and being in frigid cold conditions. Our adult services team was absolutely out there, starting fires in people's fireplaces for the elderly population that they serve. In addition to the type of work they were doing to respond at the resiliency centers, we had individuals that we put on for an overnight just in case they got snowed in. So we had people from our team volunteering to stay overnight, even if there wasn't people there, just to be sure that we can open up the next day. We had individuals that came in for the holiday, and they did so by bringing in their own food for the individuals that came to the resiliency centers and activities. We did have families that came to the resiliency center in Arnold. They had to be extracted. They came in on snow cats. They had their pets. And between the OES director, John Osborne, and our county administrator, who happened to be present, and my staff from the Health and Human Services Agency, they then transported those individuals to a friend's home so that they can get warm. The children that received the gift packs that were given to us by PG&E, which included charging blocks, blankets, and food. Our CAO, Van Lada, mentioned to me that the children, when they saw those blankets, appeared as if they'd never seen anything so wonderful. And that was very inspiring for her. So when we think about the importance of Health and Human Services during these critical times, I have to acknowledge that, yes, the staff really came through this time as they do each and every day. So thank you to each of my staff who did that, who both volunteered and participated in that event. Thank you.
Further public comment?
There is no online public comment?
Okay. If the chair will be okay with it, I'll bring it back to the board. You know, it's unfortunate, especially in these times, not be able to have all the people that are on the ground in at the same time. So I think I need to make the, take the time, as Ms. Cowley does all too often, and go out, possibly Mr. Pakenger, if you could do a tour with me, I could thank the people out in the field, have talks with them about the needs. Also, Ms. Allen and Mr. Osborne, I'll be, I'll be by the office and talk to the two of you. And, you know, this doesn't go beyond the help from the Sheriff's Department and everyone else. So with that, we'll entertain a motion. Ms. Cowley?
I'm in honor to move this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cowley.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, Mr. Stopper, I'd like to second it, but I also just a quick thank you again to the staff, I mean, everybody. I mean, unfortunately, practice makes perfect, and we've had a lot of practice over the last several years. But this might be the only disaster I've ever gotten more compliments than complaints. So well done to everybody. And Red Cross as well. Thank you for their help as well.
Absolutely. May I take the vote, Ms. Chair? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Passes a 5-0 vote of the board. Now therefore be proclaimed, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, excuse me, Supervisors hereby recognizes Calaveras County staff and their immense effort to assist the residents and visitors to Calaveras County. This is passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Calaveras County, State of California, the 11th day of January 22nd. Thank you. Ms. Allen, Mr. Pakenger. Get this to both.
Oh, we can continue, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's. I flogged up my glasses. Sorry about the mask. Oh, that's annoying. All right, next one.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to item number five. Before we read off the proclamation, I believe there is a PowerPoint that Ms. Allen and Supervisor Cowley would like to share.
Whenever you're ready? You look like you're ready now?
Okay. Now.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Cory Allen, the Health and Human Services Agency Director. But today with me, I have Maria Robinson. She is our CASA Coordinator and part of the commercially sexually exploited children coalition here in Calaveras County, and she has some really critical information to share with you. So with that, I'd like to pass this on to our community members. Maria?
Good morning, Chair Walten Dorff, and congratulations, and to the members of the board. I'd like to introduce all of our committee here that we have for the CSET Committee. I'm actually going to take this off if this is okay. And as Cory announced, my name is Maria Robinson. I am a volunteer coordinator for CASA of Calaveras, and I'd like to welcome everyone present to the 2022 Board of Supervisors Proclamation and Human Trafficking Awareness Day, which is today, January 11th, every year. Next one? A little bit about me. As I said, my name is Maria Robinson. I am a volunteer coordinator at CASA of Calaveras. I am very proud to serve the foster youth of this county, many of whom are often victims of trauma, abuse, and neglect. As I said before, I work in collaboration and with and represent the Calaveras County Interagency CSET Committee. We are a team of service providers and government agencies committed to providing trauma-informed services and protecting at-risk youth within Calaveras County. For those of you who don't know what CASA is, CASA is an acronym that stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. These are unpaid volunteers who are appointed to children while they are going through the child welfare system in the court system. Oh, sorry. As we all know, the prevention of CSEC or commercialization and sexual exploitation of children and human trafficking are crucial efforts, and they require the involvement of everyone from government agencies to each individual family unit. In partnership with Health and Human Services, the Department of Child Welfare is the lead agency tasked with prevention in our county, awareness, and intervention methods. We know that children as young as 10 can exhibit behaviors that place them at high risk for exploitation, which makes our goal of early intervention a key component of early identification. Awareness is then a powerful tool that dramatically reduces the risk of child trafficking and exploitation. I'll have you take a moment and look at these numbers. These staggering numbers are sadly only representative of the cases that are reported. It's estimated that up to 60% of these cases are not reported due to isolation or fear of retaliation by their trafficker. Currently, human trafficking is a $150 billion industry worldwide, with the United States raking in $32 billion a year alone. Even more concerning, 70% of these transactions take place online, targeting young children through online gaming and social media. As for risk factors, right here in our county, we have 45% of the children that are living at or below twice the poverty level. Because so many of our families are affected by deep poverty, many of the cases that we see in Calaveras County are transactional in nature. For instance, trading nude photos for drugs, rides, or basic needs. And what we have found is that almost 30% of those cases were due to peer-to-peer recruitment. As you also see, 86% of those exploited youth experienced child welfare involvement, and of that 82%, at least four or more had foster care placements. Last year, CASA of Amador, Calaveras, reported that out of the 70 children that we paired with a court-appointed special advocate, most, if not all, had experienced trauma, neglect, domestic violence, or abuse, putting them at greater risk for exploitation the longer they were involved in the foster care system. Education, prevention, and awareness. These key components are so important while we partner in prevention. Law enforcement, schools, guidance counselors, teachers, and healthcare providers all are also key contributors to our prevention education. And as we like to emphasize, education and prevention start at home. This is why education and ongoing awareness campaigns are important for parents and caretakers. They'll be able to educate children at home about safe social media practices and online interactions, and be better connected to community resources, therefore closing the gap of risk factors that affect youth and families. Our recommended elements for CSEC education are, number one, that they be properly viewed as a component of as a component of child abuse education. Number two, that they need to start by at least middle school. As we mentioned before, early intervention is so important when we are targeting at-risk youth. Number three, CSEC education should include prevention curricula. Not only do we want to talk to our children about what trafficking is, but we want to talk to them about how it happens and how we can get them aware to it. Number four, CSEC education should be trauma-informed. CSEC education should be culturally relevant and linguistically appropriate. We have to meet these children where they're at and not confuse them with a bunch of big words and political jargon. We just want to meet them where they can understand what the messaging is. And last, CSEC education should incorporate social and emotional learning. As you see before you, we have the paradigm shift, which kind of explains a little bit about what trauma-informed care is. As opposed to approaching a child that has either been exploiting their own child, maybe they, it's a family that has experienced any kind of trafficking or sexual exploitation, we don't want to question them and say, "What's wrong with you?" We want to come to them and meet them where they're at and say, "What happened to you?" Because many of these people who are experiencing trafficking or CSEC are often victims themselves. This helps to decrease the focus on the deficits and helps to empower them to be able to build a community of trust. We can then increase the opportunity to celebrate their successes, focus on the positive factors. It also helps to not place blame, creating feelings of guilt or shame. And it helps us create the opportunity for conversation with them so that we can continue to bridge that gap and inform them and keep them aware. It also allows the opportunity for us to collaborate with youth. This means reaching them while they're in school, while they're out and about, and creating conversations among their peers. And last, it helps to exhibit an informed and sensitive response position, which means that not just law enforcement or social workers, but parents and children can have real conversations with, without the shame and the guilt. It's not only what you do, but how you do it. We all play a part in making a difference. Bottom line, it's not only what we do as a community, it's how we go about it. All of us play an important role in the health and safety of our children. Here are some key takeaways on how you can play a part in preventing CSEC and human trafficking. First, make sure that you look through your community and look for ways to spread awareness. Next, educate yourself. Take some time out of your day to watch some videos, read, and learn more. You can find a wealth of information on YouTube or just on the Internet in general. Please make sure that you partner with agencies within our county so that you can see how you can fundraise, help, volunteer, and contribute. Next, make sure that you take a look at the resources in your community and see what you can do to improve. All of us are ready and willing to accept any kind of help that we can get in this partnership. And last, be sure to stay vigilant. It doesn't mean just while you're at the grocery store, it means while you're dropping your kids off at school. It means while you're at the restaurant, paying attention to report unusual activity and helping to reach out to those at-risk youth. In conclusion, I'd like to take my time to appreciate your effort, appreciate all of the support that you do give us at CASA of Calaveras. And also, I hope that you understand we are so grateful for the opportunity to speak and share this information with you. I look forward to finding new ways to spreading our message of awareness with you, and we hope to continue on our efforts of intervention and prevention. For any more information on how the community can get involved, I'd like to share this information for Maile Johnson. She is the Health and Human Services Agency Child Welfare Program Manager, and she is happy to help with any kind of information or answer any questions you might have. If anyone would like my information, I'm happy to share that as well. But thank you so very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
I have a question.
Oh, yes. Question. Ms. Callaway has a question for you.
Yes, of course, sorry.
I, and I think of the word trafficking different than child abuse.
Yes.
And so I'm listening to you. It sounded like it was sort of interchangeable, like the best place is to start at home, whereas you mentioned it could be happening at home. So to me, that's child abuse. Trafficking is, I don't know, taking them, doing the things that you mentioned for, you know, selling them or taking pictures of them, trading for drugs or what have you. So could you please explain the difference?
Yes, of course. So to differentiate between the term "human trafficking" and the "sexual exploitation" or "commercialization" of children is actually very simple. When it comes to an act of trafficking, there's actually three steps. So there has to be recruitment, harboring, and then obviously tactics to keep that victim by force. So this doesn't necessarily mean sex trafficking, it could also mean labor trafficking. It could mean, "I'm going to bring you over from our home country on the, under the pretense that you're going to have this great job, and then I'm going to take your visa from you." A lot of this applies to people who are over the age of 18. When it comes to CSEC or the commercialization of children, a lot of the times, this is happening within families. Many times, it's something that is generational, so a lot of parents will exploit their children just to get by, whether it's to pay for the rent, to pay some bills, to furnish their drug habit. So a lot of this, it can be separated by the age group. Essentially, it has to do with, essentially slavery. It has to do with a modern-day opportunity for people to have control over others, and essentially, these people are performing services and not getting paid or pennies for their services.
Thank you.
Of course.
Are there any other questions from the Board? No. Thank you. Is there any public comment? I don't see anyone in the audience. What about online? No?
There's no online public comment.
Okay. Bring it back to...
She wants to-
Oh, is that someone? Sorry. I didn't see you. My apologies.
Sorry, just really quickly, thank you. I'm Maile Johnson, so I'm the Program Manager for Calaveras County Child Welfare. And you had asked a question regarding child abuse and trafficking. And so I think that Maria did a very good job explaining sort of the differences. But one thing that we do see in our county a lot is with our youth being...
Is that better?
Sorry, is that better? Yes. So what we see a lot in Calaveras County with our youth is there's a lot of isolation and a lot of just social naivety. Since we are so very isolated up here, we're not the same as what you would see in like a larger city. And so we have had some cases in our county where teenagers are exchanging photos for rides into town from maybe some of our more isolated areas, or, you know, exchanging them among each other and then having that blasted on the Internet for many people to see. And so it, while it may not be necessarily the parents that are abusing the children, it's the procurers of this data, or the pictures, or the, it's the people that are soliciting this from these minor children that creates the child abuse event. So I just wanted to clarify that just a little bit further for you. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. With that, Supervisor Callaway, would you like to read the proclamation?
Yeah, I would. It's very difficult, so my voice might crack. This is, I am, I could never do what you do, so thank you very much. Whereas human, whereas human trafficking and child sexual exploitation continue to pose a serious threat to our community, whereas human trafficking and child sexual exploitation is a community problem, and finding solutions depends on the involvement of people throughout the community. And whereas all victims of human trafficking and child sexual exploitation, whether for the purpose of forced labor, sexual slavery, or commercial sexual exploitation for the trafficker or others, should have access to a safe place, excuse me, to live, appropriate medical care, counseling, or mental health services. And whereas parents, guardians, family members, foster care providers, childcare providers, educators, law enforcement personnel, medical professionals, mental health professionals, social service providers, and the public, all of us, play an important role in working collaboratively to prevent human trafficking and child sexual exploitation. Whereas the State of California has proclaimed January as Human Trafficking and Child Sexual Exploitation and Prevention Month. Are there any public comments on this proclamation? That's good. I'm glad. Thank you. Come back. May I call for the motion? I'd like to have a motion in support of this proclamation, please.
I would like to make a motion in support of this proclamation, not only as a community member, but a father, a grandfather, and concerns for all the children in our community.
Thank you, Supervisor Stopper. And a second, please.
I will second it.
And a second by Vice Chair Toffenelli. And the vote is?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Passes on a 5-0 vote of the Board. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Calaveras Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of January 2022 as Human Trafficking and Child Exploitation Prevention Month. That's a mouthful, and it really, it really says a lot to the public. In Calaveras County, we encourage citizens to work together to support, and I had problems when I first read this, so listen to me all the way through, to support human trafficking. I thought, "What do you mean? We're supposed to support it?" And child sexual exploitation. I thought, "Hmm, there is something wrong here." And then I hit the right term, "prevention activities in their communities and schools during this month and throughout the year." Ms. Robinson, I'd like the honor for giving this to you. All of you. All of us. All of you. Community. You've handled it beautifully, Supervisor.
Where are you watching it?
Thank all of you so well. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You guys are awesome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Next is general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. Is there any general public comment? Anything online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. With that, we will move on to consent agenda. Do you have multiple consent agenda items? Is there any Board member that wishes to pull from the consent agenda? See, and none. Is there any public comment? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Should we move?
There's a first, first by Supervisor Garmendy, second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
With that, we have, I would like to ask the rest of the Board if we, given the amount of time, if we could move item on the regular agenda, 15 and 16 up, and go to 13 and 14 after those two items are heard. Is there any? No? Okay. With that, we will move on to regular agenda item number 15, clerk.
Item 15 is an ordinance brought by planning, conduct a public hearing, adopt an ordinance approving a negative declaration and amending the zoning of APN 030016012 from the Professional Office Plan Development CP-PD to Local Commercial Plan Development C1-PD for April Johnson's authorized application of breach property description and map of reclassified property.
Thank you. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Good morning.
Good morning. Tim Pitt, Planner 2, with Calaveras County Planning Department. Today, we have Project 2021-023, and it is a zoning amendment for April Johnson. The applicant is requesting approval to change the zoning of a parcel located at 33 Avery Sheep Ranch Road from CP-PD to C1-PD for the purpose of opening a retail bicycle sales and service business. The parcel is already developed with a 1,873-square-foot building and a paved parking surface. No additional development is being requested at this time. The parcel is located on the corner of Avery Sheep Ranch Road and Highway 4 in Avery. The parcel is 0.49 acres and is currently zoned CP-PD, which is Professional Office-Plan Development, and the general plan land use designation is commercial. Commercial general plan land use designation is intended for commercial or office uses in the area with adequate public infrastructure. Typical uses include general commercial uses such as retail, stores, and other service businesses. Personal business offices, employment centers, commercial service businesses, and other similar and compatible uses are typically allowed in the commercial land use designation. Compatible zoning districts within this land use designation are rural commercial, local commercial, general commercial, and professional office, and this requested C1 local commercial zoning would be compatible with the general plan land use designation. The purpose of the C1 zone is to provide areas for small-scale retail and service businesses that meet the needs of the local community areas and are located in close proximity to residential neighborhoods. The surrounding zoning has CP, Professional Office, to the north, a mix of residential zonings R1 and RR, and some C2 general commercial to the south of the parcel. To the east across Highway 4 is primarily general commercial, and directly to the west is R1 single-family residential. The land uses surrounding the parcel are a mix of commercial and residential uses. To the north is a commercial office building. The south has an open undeveloped 4-plus-acre parcel. Commercial uses to the east and single-family residential neighborhoods lie to the west. The proposed C1 zoning is meant to be a low-density, low-intensity commercial district that provides a gradual transition from the more intense C2 zoning to the east to the residential uses to the west of the subject parcel. A bicycle sales and service rental and repair shop is a use permitted by right in the C1 zone and would be consistent with the surrounding uses. zone and would be consistent with the surrounding uses. Parcel currently has a planned development combining zone designation. The intent of the PD combining zone is to regulate site development and aesthetics, not just the type of use. As I mentioned earlier, no additional development is being proposed at this time. However, the PD combining zone does provide the county with an opportunity to move for a more thorough review process if any future development were to be proposed. Although the applicant did not propose to include the PD combining zone with the request for the C1 base zone to ensure consistency and conformity with the surrounding zoning and land uses, staff and the planning commission recommended that the PD overlay remain intact. The performance standards for the CP and C1 zones are identical, and the parking standard is the same for both zones. Currently, the onsite parking is adequate to serve. The existing structure and the change in use does not require additional parking. An initial study and negative declaration were prepared and circulated for this project from October 20, 2021, through November 19, 2021 pursuant to SEQA guidelines, and it was determined that project-related impacts would be less than significant. A comment was received from the county environmental management agency stating the existing onsite wastewater treatment system was in failure and would need to be replaced. That has since already been done. The applicant's already taken care of that to the satisfaction of the environmental management agency. There were no objections to the project or conditions for the project from any other outside agencies. And at a duly noticed public hearing on December 9, 2021, after considering all information presented, the Calaveras County Planning Commission, recommended by a five-o vote, the Board of Supervisors adopted a negative declaration and zone changed from CP-PD to C1-PD. Any questions?
Well, will there need to be, if the board approves this change, will there need to be any other review because of the PD?
No.
That's...
No. No additional development is being proposed. The PD really is just in place just in case in the future they want to build, let's say, another outbuilding or something like that, or, I mean, potentially a stage in their backyard.
Got it. No? Got it. And they don't need approval if they want to repaint the building?
Correct. Correct.
That's... Okay.
Yeah. Glad to hear that. You know, you addressed the concerns moving forward in reinstating the PD to the C1. You know, but all in all, as someone that's, you know, the years working through everything with the planning commission, and having some issues in my district when it came to the Mark Twain Healthcare Center, I just always want to bring up that, you know, planned development is something that we should consider in the future as we move forward. There's a multitude of restrictions and hurdles for anyone to move forward with any business. Let's say someone bought a business up in an area where someone was doing a grocery store, and then they sold that business to someone else, and the other person starts up a grocery store. They have to go through the whole review process again because of planned development. It's not just restrictive to the people trying to be successful in businesses. It's restrictive, I mean, it's added work to the people in the planning department at the same time. So, you know, we all got different perspectives on it. I understand the, there are positive aspects to it as we move forward with planned development when it comes to making sure that we move forward in a direction that the county has chosen for that, but all in all, the cost and everything is prohibitive to businesses as we move forward.
Any other board comments or questions? Ms.? Julie or Gina, do you have any additional information or comment?
Just a little clarification. So, the planned development only applies to building permits, so only upon construction of new structures does the planned development permit actually take effect and become a discretionary application process. So, just the mere change of use or change of ownership does not trigger planned development. But he, Commissioner Stoppa, or I should say, sorry, used to point commission, Supervisor Stoppa does make some good points, and evaluating or analyzing planned development and how you want that to look as we move forward with the zoning code update would be a very appropriate discussion to have. So, look forward to further discussing that in the near future.
Just one thing to add, Supervisor Follendorf. The planning commission is also aware of the difficulties with the planned development combining zone. It's just that it's something that would need to be analyzed on a multi-parcel basis, an area basis, rather than spot zoning individual parcels, but it is definitely something that the planning department is looking at.
Thank you. Is the applicant here that wishes to make any? Do you have anything you want to add?
Oh, no.
Okay. 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 With that, is there any other public comment? Either, is there anything online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. And there's no in the audience? Okay. With that, if there's anything additional you wish to...
Nothing for me.
Okay. So, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion on this building where I used to eat when it was Larry's 4K, and then it became a financial office, and now it's going to become a bicycle shop, which is, has a great potential in at least the Ebbets Pass corridor. And I move that we accept the zone change and the negative declaration on this parcel. Thank you.
I'd like to second Supervisor Calloway's motion, and just best in your endeavors. Maybe I can come by and visit and maybe get a new bicycle, because I need to get back in health.
Make it an electric bicycle.
Is there a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes by vote. Do you have that? Okay. Thank you. Good luck. So, I'm looking at the time, and I know I'm going to probably backpedal here. Given that item 16 is going to be a lot longer than the potential of lunch coming up here soon, we'll move 13 and 14 back up, and then revisit that, because I don't want to open and close in the middle of lunch. Is that okay with staff?
You're in charge, Ms. Follendorf.
And just looking at them, making sure, give them... Okay. We'll move on to item 13, clerk.
We have an action item by the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. We have assigned members of the Board of Supervisors to various committees for calendar year 2022. I provided a board assignments, your committee assignments for the past year of 2021, and would like direction as to if any of the supervisors would like to change committees or stay with what we have.
Ms. Follendorf?
Yes.
I'm comfortable with where I'm at.
Okay. And...
Madam Chair, I am comfortable with where I'm at, on the committees I have at this point.
Okay. Like two for two?
Madam Chair, I have just one. I thought maybe somebody could help me out on this. But, yeah, I've served on the mental health board for the last five years, and it's been great. I've really enjoyed the work. It's just, somebody else might want to have a chance at it as well. It's a good board. We do a great work. I really value it. But, you know, five years, it might be time to have some new eyes on projects. That's the mental health board.
Ben, was the alternate?
I was the alternate. I'd like to stay the alternate. I have taken on the, I have taken the other ones that some other supervisors in the past have liked to move on from. So, I'm comfortable with the amount of committees I am on at this time.
Supervisor Garamendi, when do they meet?
They meet monthly, on a first Tuesday of the month in the evening.
First Tuesday?
So, it's usually a day we're available. I've just got about eight committees. I've got to stack them already. And it's not that I don't think this works valuable, and I really enjoyed it. I just like to see if I can spread the load a little bit, and I really do think new eyes are good on projects.
Is it Zoom or in person?
It's a, well, it's hybrid right now. Hopefully, we'll be back in person.
And when they meet in person, do they meet here in the chamber?
No. They meet over in Health and Human Services.
So, they have it on campus, but over there?
Yeah.
Ms. Calloway?
One on the seat of the chair.
Your microphone.
Oh, I was indicating, do you, are you, I was trying to entertain. I was trying to show you, Jack.
Is the law lawyer trustee, unless there's a change? The chair usually sits on the law lawyer. Has the trustee that's changed?
That's, well, the last three years I've been here.
Ted, do you have a comment? Okay.
Also, I think, I'd like to evaluate, you know, I'm on the, I'm certainly a goal in NACO representative, and really, I have not been involved in any of the Washington DC, like 3,000 other...
I just wanted, I'm sorry, can I remind everyone to turn their mics on when they're speaking? Thank you.
My question is, NACO, we've had him on, we've had him off. You know, I have not been active. If we wanted just to pass on that one, or somebody else wanted it, I'm all right with it. I just don't have time to do that.
I think, I think the last year or so, we already made a decision to pass on anything unless something becomes a fire. So, you know, is that a decision of the board to move forward as we have through the process already?
I didn't know we'd made a decision, but I certainly think that CSAC and RCRC give us an adequate voice about that problem. So, have we just leave that at a blank?
Yeah. Supervisor Olivera was a big NACO guy, and he'd go back to all the conferences. I'll tell you what, Jack, I will, I will take the mental health board from you.
Thank you, Gary. It really is a good, good group.
I can swap with...
You can pass me off all the information that you have, so I can get updated.
Thanks, Chair.
And then do you just want to swap NACO and just be the alternate? And just keep it both you and...
You want to do NACO?
Yeah, we can just flip-flop.
Super.
Okay. So, Stacy, did you get that?
So, back to the mental health board first, we have Supervisor Toffanelli as the board representative, and Supervisor Stoppa. Supervisor Toffanelli as the rep for mental health board, and Supervisor Stoppa as alternate.
Correct.
And then for NACO, Chair Follendorf, you will be board rep, and then...
I'll go.
Perfect.
Are there any other committee meetings that we need to discuss? Otherwise, I will enter the motion.
We actually have, I'm sorry, we do have the East Side GPA, or those are all the senators. They're on here. Never mind. I apologize.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Otherwise, I will ask for a motion.
So moved.
Okay. Move by Supervisor Stoppa. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, hold on. Public comment?
Yeah.
Is there any public comment? Any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. We'll move forward. Is, what was it? There's second, first by Stoppa, second by Garamendi, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then, what time do we have? Okay. Let's move on to 14, appointment, clerk.
So, item 14 is an action item again by clerk of Board of Supervisors. Appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas.
Hi. Good afternoon. This is Robin Glenn, Assistant Clerk Recorder. This is the annual appointment of applicants that the board appoints to various committees, commissions, and advisory boards. Before we get started, I would like to ask to remove the Parks and Recreation District 4 applicant. There was a lack of posting on that seat, so we'll be bringing that one back at a future meeting date. The remaining applicants were unopposed and could be acted upon all at one time if the board so chooses to appoint the applicants that are presented before you.
Is there any comment by board members about any of the applicants other than the item that Robin had mentioned? Okay. Is there any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. And there's no public comment in the audience? Okay. So, with that, entertain excluding, do I need, does that need to be in the motion excluding that particular position? Okay. A motion approving excluding the particular position that was not posted publicly?
I'll move the item as stated.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes by vote. Move by Supervisor Toffanelli, second by Stoppa. Got it? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's 11:30, and item 16, so what would you, we can start, or we can do early lunch?
It's at 2:00. If you don't want to have to stop in the middle of it, then you can, we can take lunch now, and then just start it and finish it when we come back.
How does the rest of the board feel? Do you want to start and then stop, or?
Do you think it's going to take over an hour to decide? That would be just ordinary, not 12:30, and then go, everybody can go to lunch, and the board is over.
I think give it a run until noon, Steve.
Where we're at.
If you guys want to entertain that, that's fine. I just want to be conscientious of...
I'm fine with whether you, whatever you decide, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, let's give it a run, and we'll see where we're at at noon, and then we'll go from there. Okay. As long as the applicants are okay with the possibility of a break. Okay. We're moving on. Agenda item 16, clerk.
Item 16, a resolution by planning. Conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution denying the appeal by the citizens for responsible industry of the planning commission's approval of the SEQA addendum and conditional use permit to the construction and operation of a community scale 3 megawatt biomass combined heat and power facility in Welseyville.
And with that, I will open the public hearing. Who's that? Gina, are you giving the presentation?
No, she gave Madeline.
Okay. I don't see her, I don't see Madeline.
And then we held back. We may be taking...
I know. I'm sorry. I didn't...
Part of our employee fitness program.
I've gotten worried with the time. I didn't want to... Hi.
Hi. Okay. Sorry. I just needed a man in here to figure out what's going on.
Yep. Okay. You're up. Yep, sorry. Okay, you're up.
All right.
The hearing has been open.
Thank you. Give me a moment here to share my presentation. There we go. Can everyone see that? And can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Well, good morning. I'm Madeline Fandrell, Planner Two, and today I am presenting the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of conditional use permit 2020-074 for the Blue Mountain Electric Company's biomass facility in Willseville. So on November 10th, 2021, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for the construction and operation of a three-megawatt biomass combined heat and power facility in Willseville. On November 24th, the Citizens for Responsible Industry submitted an appeal requesting that the board overturn that decision. So I'm going to give some background information and discuss the project before getting into the details of the appeal letter. So this project was originally approved under administrative use permit 2015-011 for the Calveras Healthy Impact Product Solutions, which I will be referring to by its acronym CHIPS. That use permit was approved by the Planning Director on June 23rd, 2017. The AUP was extended by the Planning Commission for two years and expired on December 31st, 2020. Prior to the expiration, on October 30th, 2020, a new application for an administrative use permit was received from the Blue Mountain Electric Company, which I will be referring to as BME, for the proposed project on the same parcel. After reviewing the determination made by the former Planning Director that an AUP was the appropriate vehicle to process this previous use permit under the zoning code, the Planning Director determined that a conditional use permit was the proper permit type required for this project. So this is the site located off of Railroad Flat Road in Willseville. In an aerial view, this is the 2020 county aerial image. The parcel is highlighted in green. This is APN 012-011-014, which is a 13-acre parcel that was subdivided from the Calveras County Water District's wastewater treatment facility. So I'm going to compare the previous administrative use permit and the current proposed conditional use permit. So the overall proposed project for the CUP has not changed from the previously approved AUP. However, the power facility will be operated by the Blue Mountain Electric Company on the now CHIPS-owned parcel. Both projects were to construct and operate a biomass facility, which will generate three megawatts of electrical power that would be exported to the grid. The biomass would come from timber harvest residuals and fuels treatment activities on private and public lands. And will be converted to a gas in the gasifier and used in internal combustion engines to run generators to make electricity. The same pieces of equipment will be used to support this operation and include a feedstock driver system, gasifiers and their respective gas conditioning systems, internal combustion engine generator sets, a standby flare device, and a flot loader. So just like the previously approved project, the facility would still consume approximately 25,500 bone-dried tons of woody biomass per year, which would be delivered to the site, averaging about six truckloads per day from March to November when biomass is accessible in forest. It's still anticipated that the facility may need storage for up to five months, approximately 10,625 bone-dried tons of their chips. The plant would still operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, year-round, and generate approximately 600 pounds of biochar per hour, which will be sold. The only difference between the two projects is that there has been a revision to the site plan, which swaps the locations of the facility structures and equipment and the biomass storage area. This is the 2015 approved site plan, which depicts the facility structures and the equipment in the northwestern portion of the parcel and the biomass storage in the northeastern portion. The subject parcel is part of the former Associated Lumber and Box Company, which was a large sawmill that covered much of the adjacent CCWD parcel and closed in 1968. There was a geotechnical engineering study that was done in June of 2021 that found that the soil conditions in the northwestern portion of the parcel that was originally proposed for the facility structures didn't meet the necessary structural support requirements because of fill soils from the historic use of the lumber mill. However, the previously proposed biomass storage area in the northeastern portion of the parcel was found to meet the structural requirement. So it was recommended by the Geotech Company that the applicant revise the site plan to swap the facility structures and the biomass storage areas, which you can see here in the proposed site plan for the CUP. This revision will not change the project footprint, and therefore, the entire facility is still within the boundary of the project site, which was initially analyzed for the previous project. So I apologize. I'm doing my best here to show you a zoomed-in version of the facility. Essentially, the site will consist of entering in from the north, from the encroachment off of Railroad Flat Road, coming in, there's an access road to the west, the all-weather access road encircles the facility, and you've got parking, the facility structure, the gasification tower, and then some accessory equipment. This is the building elevation showing the main structure on the left and the gasification structure on the right. So the subject parcel, as you can see here, it is completely surrounded by the CCWD parcels and also screened from it to the surrounding residential uses to the south by vegetation. The facility will use the northern half of the parcel, which further retains a buffer around the operation. As I said previously, the access is via an easement through the adjacent CCWD-owned parcel to the east from Railroad Flat Road. An encroachment permit has already been received and the encroachment onto Railroad Flat was improved. The subject parcel is on public service and is designated as public and institutional in the county general plan. The facility will generate electricity to be sold to PJNE on their distribution level circuit and will also serve a public purpose by supporting local wildlife protection efforts through the consumption of biomass from timber harvest residuals and fuels treatment activities on regional private and public lands, which is consistent with the PS zone. This project, as designed, meets the performance standards of the PS zone as required by county code and is consistent with goals and policy of the general plan, including goal COS 1, which decreases, decreasing the risk of catastrophic wildfires by encouraging forests to be free from unnatural accumulation of trees and brush. Also, policy COS-1.3, which is to encourage initiatives to utilize vegetation for energy production, and policy COS 4.8, which is to encourage the use and installation of alternative energy generating systems. So an initial study and negative declaration was prepared and circulated for comments from May 10th to June 10th, 2017, and was adopted with the approval of the AUP 2015-011 on June 23rd, 2017. The initial study and mitigated negative declaration, which I'll be referring to as the ISMND, analyzed the environmental impacts and determined that with the proposed mitigation measures, this project will not have a significant environmental impact. The proposed project is the same as the project analyzed in 2017, except that the location of the facility structures and the biomass storage area has been reconfigured, which is a minor technical change that does not affect the environmental analysis or the conclusions of the ISMND, as everything is still within the same footprint. As the potential impacts of the project were evaluated in a previously adopted initial study, none of the factors triggering additional environmental review under CEQA Guideline 15162 are present. The 2017 CEQA document provides a sufficient and adequate analysis of the environmental impacts. Thus, the county determined that an addendum pursuant to CEQA Guideline 15164 is the appropriate environmental document for the proposed project. Mitigation measures were incorporated into the ISMND to reduce the impacts to less than significant levels. And a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which I'll be referring to as the MMRP for the initial study, was inadvertently not adopted with the previous AUP for CHIPS, but will be adopted now. No additional mitigation measures have been prepared, nor have any previous mitigation measures changed. Therefore, the mitigations contained within the MMRP are the same as that were prepared and vetted with the original project. A condition of approval has also been imposed on the project that requires conformance with the initial study and mitigated negative declaration to ensure compliance with the MMRP. So an addendum to the 2017 ISMND was produced for the current project, which includes a discussion of all the sections included in the 2017 CEQA document, as well as the new sections from the 2018 CEQA update. As the reconfiguration of the facility structures on the site would not increase potential impacts, proposed mitigation measures remain appropriate, and there are no changes to either the mitigations or neither, nor are there new mitigations proposed. Okay, so, Planning Commission hearing on November 10th. The staff presented the application for the conditional use permit, and during which the representative for Blue Mountain Electric, Mr. Greg Stengel, was present, was present, as well as their consultant, Mr. Evan Edgers, who's the principal engineer of Edgers and Associates. In addition, Mr. Ray Kapahi, who is the Senior Air Quality Engineer with Environmental Permanent and Specialist, was present, who completed the air quality analysis for the project. Also, the apparent legal counsel, Mr. Kevin Carmichael, an associate attorney with Adams, Broadwell, Joseph, and Cardoza, was present. All of those individuals are present here today, except for Mr. Kapahi, who had to leave early. So the morning of the hearing, Mr. Carmichael had submitted a 58-page comment weather to the Planning Commission. But as it was received that morning, the commission stated that the submission was in violation of the Planning Commission procedures, which requires that comments be filed no later than 5:00 PM on Monday before the hearing. Mr. Carmichael also gave verbal comments during the hearing and expressed several concerns. First, that as the MMRP was not included as part of the final ISMND adopted in 2017, that the MND was legally deficient. He also stated that per Public Resources Code 21166, the county is required to prepare a subsequent EIR, excuse me, an environmental impact report, as changes in the project circumstances will cause new significant effects to air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, public health, transportation, and biological resources than were previously analyzed. In addition, Mr. Carmichael stated that recent wildfires have affected the forest supply, supplying feedstock to the project, and that these changes were not addressed in the addendum. After hearing the project presentation, considering all the information presented by the applicant and public comment, the Planning Commission approved conditional use permit 2020-074, 5 to 0. So the appeal letter was received on November 24th, 2021, which requests that the board overturn the Planning Commission's approval of the conditional use permit. The appeal letter claims that the county must prepare a subsequent or supplemental EIR as the project and environmental setting have undergone significant changes. And as a result, the county failed to adequately analyze and mitigate potentially significant impacts to air quality, biological resources, greenhouse gases, and transportation. In addition to the comments received from Adams, Broadwell, the appeal letter included air quality comments from Clark and Associates Environmental Consulting and comments from Mr. Scott Cashin, who is an independent biological resources consultant. I'm going to go through the main points discussed in the appeal letter and summarize the county's responses. So their first comment, the county cannot rely on an addendum to the original ISMND because the ISMND was not adopted in compliance with CEQA. This comment is in regards to the MMRP, which, as I stated previously, was inadvertently not adopted with the approval and the adoption of the ISMND in 2017. The apparents are claiming that the ISMND is therefore legally deficient with no binding mitigation measures. So the MMRP is basically, it's a separate document, which gets attached to the final draft of the CEQA document that includes just the list of mitigations. This doesn't mean that the mitigation measures were not developed as part of the ISMND. They were included in the final adopted document. They're discussed in each of the relevant checklist sections, as well as stated in the final signed mitigated negative declaration, which is a separate statement that gets included in the final draft. The Planning Director took action to adopt the ISMND with the approval of the AUP on June 23rd, 2017, and no legal challenge was filed within the applicable statutory time period to do so under CEQA. The ISMND has therefore been legally adopted, regardless of whether or not it originally contained deficiencies, and is presumed to be adequate under CEQA. The planned project will include an MMRP, and a condition of approval has been imposed for the conditional use permit that requires compliance with the MMRP. Second comment, the county must prepare a subsequent EIR for this project. So pursuant to CEQA Guideline 15162, the county is not required to reanalyze the whole project again, unless there is substantial evidence that there are changes in the project or the circumstances or new significant effects. Instead, the county analyzes whether there is a fair argument that the proposed changes might cause a significant new environmental impact or significantly worsen an already identified impact. Or whether anything is changed on the ground that would result in new or worsened significant impact. Section 15164 further states that an addendum to an adopted negative declaration may be prepared if only minor technical changes or additions are necessary, and none of the conditions described in section 15162 calling for preparation of a subsequent EIR or negative declaration have occurred. The reconfiguration of the facility structures and the biomass storage on the site will not create new impacts because the footprint has not changed, nor have new mitigation measures been created or new information or substantial change has been identified that will require a subsequent ISMND or an EIR. Comment number three, changes in circumstances and new information of substantial importance show the project will have new or more severe impacts on air quality and public health. So the appeal letter states that the feedstock availability report that was, it was conducted in 2013, and it basically, it focused exclusively on the Upper McColty River watershed, which is, this feedstock study was used to, during the completion of the 2017 initial study, right? So they're claiming that this feedstock availability is going to be affected by the Butte Fire, the Kaldor Fire, and the Tamrac Fire. So the feedstock study was completed in 2013. First of all, that's prior to the 2015 Butte Fire, so that cannot constitute new information or changed circumstances under CEQA when the initial study was completed in 2017 and took the Butte Fire into consideration. Also, I wanted to update, I received information from CAL FIRE, which verified that there were a total of 9,963 acres that were burned during the Butte Fire in the Upper McColty River watershed. And there's an error, and I want to explain, that the Tamrac Fire did indeed burn zero acres within the watershed, but the Kaldor Fire did burn 190 acres within the watershed. However, if you take the entire watershed into consideration, it's 550 square miles, which is approximately 352,000 acres. That is negligible. Comment number four, "Changes to the project site configuration result in new substantial effects on biological resources." So, the applicant claims that the reconfiguration will result in changes to site drainage and have significant impacts to wetlands. Although the site plan has been modified, the footprint will not change. Therefore, the changes to the project would not increase potential impacts. In addition, the footprint has already been disturbed by the historic use as a sawmill and the potential impacts to the environment of developing a biomass facility on this disturbed area, including the placement of the biomass storage area and all of the facility equipment. On this footprint was already analyzed in the 2017 ISMND. And I'll discuss this in further detail when I get to the specific comments by the, from the biologist. Comment number five, "The addendum fails to adequately describe feedstock receiving, handling, and storage." The applicant is correct that a, the project description for, a project description for an original negative declaration or EIR must have an accurate, stable, and finite project description. And what they're specifically referring to here is the explanation of how the biomass will be converted to wood chips. The original ISMND adequately described feedstock receiving, handling, and storage. The air quality section of the ISMND states that novel emission sources from the facility operation include chipping biomass, truck activity, motor activity, employee commute trips, biomass hauling, and biochar hauling. Therefore, the original air emissions analysis did include chipping. Comment number six, "The addendum fails to consistently and adequately describe biochar handling, storage, and shipping." The project description on page five of the ISMND states that biochar produced by the facility would be backhauled from the project site in trucks that deliver biomass to the site. This is an error and is not what was analyzed. The transportation section in the ISMND calculated the number of trips per day for biomass delivery, employee commutes, and lunch trips, as well as an occasional service truck and a truck to haul away biochar. As stated in the new addendum, the biomass consumption will stay the same and operational traffic volumes for feedstock delivery, biochar hauling, and employee trips will be the same as previously analyzed in the ISMND. Comment number seven, "The addendum fails to adequately describe the construction workforce and construction worker vehicle trips." The reconfiguration of the facility structures and equipment will have no effect on the number of workers necessary to complete each phase of the project's construction because there's no change in the capacity of the facility, nor is there any change in its location or distance from the workforce. The number of trips per day calculated in the ISMND remains a relevant and adequate means of assessing the impact of workforce trips to and from the site. Comment eight, "The addendum fails to adequately describe changes in the existing setting." The appeal letter states here that the addendum fails to adequately describe the existing setting with respect to air quality, and goes on to state that the addendum measures the project's air quality impacts by comparing emissions from the biomass facility with emissions from the pile and burn practice, using the pile and burn practice as the baseline. This is not correct. It is not the addendum, it was in the ISMND, which used the emission factors for biomass feedstock faded to the pile and burn scenario. However, the ISMND was previously adopted without being legally challenged, and the adequacy of its baseline is not at issue here. The air quality section of the addendum discussed the data and the conclusions of an air quality study done by, done in 2021 by environmental permitting specialists, who did not use slash and burn as a baseline. It presents the emission data calculated for the proposed equipment only. Furthermore, analyzing the impacts of the actual proposed project instead of relying solely on a prior analysis, which was a hypothetical project, is not a change to the existing setting within the meaning of 15162. So, in addition to the comments received from Adams-Bodwell, the appeal letter included air quality comments from Clark &amp; Associates. Their first comment, "The county's air quality analysis fails to consider the impacts of chemicals present in the feedstock for the gasifier and has not evaluated the health risk posed by the emissions on sensitive receptors." Again, concerns about contaminants in proposed feedstock should have been raised at the time that the original ISMND was adopted, as the revised project describing the addendum does not propose any changes to the types of feedstock. As stated in the ISMND, the proposed project would utilize fuel that fully meets the definition of biomass in California Public Resources Code Section 40106A. In addition, Title 14 of California Code Regulation Section 18720 defines wood waste as solid waste consisting of wood pieces or particles which are generated from manufacturing or production of wood products, harvesting, processing, or storage of raw wood materials, or construction and demolition activities. Sources of feedstock used in a biomass conversion operation are already required by state law to fall within these definitions. Comment number 10, also from Clark &amp; Associates, "The county has failed to identify mitigation measures that will be required to ensure that toxic air emissions do not reach sensitive receptors." Again, concerns about toxic air contaminations should have been raised at the time the original ISMND was adopted, as the revised project described in the addendum does not propose any changes to the percentage or the types of feedstock that will be comprised of materials other than woody biomass. The 2021 air quality study by EPS included the engineering evaluation for the authority to construct permit for the project with the Calaveras County Air Pollution Control District. The engineering evaluation states that the project would release trace amounts of organic toxic air contaminants. Since the biomass feedstock would consist of clean, untreated material, emissions of toxic metals such as arsenic, hexavalent chromium, and cadmium are not expected to be released. The evaluation includes an assessment of exposure to toxic air contaminants, which calculated that the cancer and non-cancer risk scores at the nearest residence, which is 2,000 feet away, are low. So, the appeal letter also included comments from Mr. Scott Cashin, who's an independent biological consultant. Mr. Cashin raised concerns regarding the water line, the electrical transmission lines, which will run from the facility to an off-site PGE transformer, potentially jurisdictional wetlands along the northwestern site boundary, and special status, special status species. Again, concerns about these impacts should have been raised at the time the original ISMND was adopted, as the revised project described in the addendum does not propose any changes to the installation of this infrastructure. As discussed in the ISMND and the addendum, this northwestern portion of the site and adjacent area within the CCWD wastewater treatment facility was previously disturbed from the historic use of the sawmill, and biological impacts will be minimal due to the lack of biological resources from this historic use of disturbance. As there's no change in the project footprint and the same types of equipment are being used, no more disturbance to potential wetlands will occur within the proposed project, with the proposed project, than would have occurred from the prior project. In addition, the biological site assessment concluded that the site did not provide suitable habitat for sensitive species, and that there are no sensitive species in or adjacent to the project area. I also received an email yesterday from Diane Moore with more biological consultants, who had compared the previous and current site plans. She stated that with the same mitigation measures in place, there would be no new impacts to biological resources from the reconfiguration of the biomass storage area and facility equipment and structures that were not previously analyzed. So, to conclude, none of the concerns alleged by the applicant require the Board of Supervisors to grant the appeal and require the county to prepare a subsequent or supplemental EIR under SEQA. It is the opinion of staff that the arguments set forth by the applicant in its comments and appeal letters do not negate the planning commission's rationale for approving the addendum and conditional use permit. Project-related impacts were previously analyzed and considered by the planning commission, and action was taken to conditionally approve the project and accept the addendum and MMRP to the 2017 ISMND, prepared for the 2015 administrative use permit. The statute of limitations to challenge any flaws in the ISMND analysis has passed. The proposed revisions are minimal and do not expand the development's footprint or the intensity of the use. So, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors deny the appeal by citizens of Responsible Industry, thereby upholding the planning commission's approval of conditional use permit 2020-074. Thank you for bearing with me here, all of that. There's a lot of information. And I will leave this up and available. I can always share if you have questions, if you need to refer back to any of the figures.
Are there any questions from the board to staff at this time? No. Okay. So, next, then I'll, and there's no further staff comments. I'm going to move on to the presentation by the applicant. So, is that, okay. Are they here?
My understanding is that Mr. Carmichael is appearing via Zoom, and I believe the clerk is making him a panelist so that he may use video.
He is now a panelist and has video capability.
Okay. Mr. Carmichael? You are, okay.
Hi. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Good morning, Chair Follendorf, Supervisors, and Staff. My name is Kevin Carmichael, and I am attorney with Adams-Bodwell-Joseph &amp; Cardozo. I'm here representing Citizens for Responsible Industry, Coalition of Labor Organizations, with members who may be adversely affected by the potential public and worker health and safety hazards and environmental and public service impact of the project. The coalition includes county residents who are in attendance this meeting, as well as other individual members and organizations, including California Unions for Reliable Energy, its local affiliates, and members who live, recreate, and work in Calaveras County and communities near the project site. Citizens supports development of renewable energy projects, but is concerned about projects like this one which have unmitigated environmental impacts and lack community benefits. Citizens and its members would be directly affected by the project's impacts. We respectfully request that the board uphold this appeal, vacate the planning commission's decision to approve the conditional use permit for the project, and withdraw the addendum due to the county's failure to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. As detailed in our prior comments on November 10th, 2021, and in our, in our November 23, 2021, appeal, the planning commission improperly relied on an addendum to the 2017 ISMND in violation of SEQA to approve the project. In addition to the procedural deficiencies identified by citizens, with the assistance of air quality expert James Clark and biological expert Scott Cashin, we have determined that changes in circumstances and changes in the project, since the original ISMND was adopted, will result in more severe environmental impacts than previously analyzed. Our experts have also provided the county with substantial evidence supporting a fair argument that the project is likely to result in new air quality, transportation, and biological resources impacts, which the county has never disclosed or mitigated, and which are more severe than the impacts analyzed in the 2017 ISMND. These impacts require preparation of a subsequent or supplemental EIR pursuant to SEQA. The appeal identifies several violations of SEQA which must be addressed before the project can be approved. We filed supplemental written comments yesterday in response to the staff report, which identify additional violations. I will address a few of those issues here, and I encourage the board to review our written comments and expert comments in their entirety before voting on this appeal. First, the county cannot rely on an addendum to the ISMND because there have been changes in circumstances and changes in the project design since the original project was approved that have increased the intensity of the project's impacts. These include recent California wildfires, which created additional biomass feedstock, but will require longer haul trips than analyzed in the ISMND or the addendum, as well as changes in the project's configuration that will place project structures in potential jurisdictional wetland areas of the project site. With regard to the feedstock, the county failed to address the project's significant air quality impacts that will result from sourcing feedstock from areas that are outside of the feedstock availability study area surveyed for the 2017 ISMND. The county states in the staff report that the Calder Fire and the Tamarack Fire occurred outside of the area studied for feedstock availability for the project. However, it also states that these fires will increase the amount of feedstock available to the project. Additionally, recent press by the applicant explains that the large number of burned trees from these wildfires require immediate removal. Therefore, it's reasonably foreseeable that the project will source feedstock from wildfire burnout areas that were not studied in the ISMND's feedstock analysis. The county and the applicant, by their own admissions, have therefore identified a new change in the project that has not been analyzed. By sourcing feedstock from areas outside of the upper McColony watershed area, the project's truck trips will exceed the distances previously analyzed and reported in the ISMND and addendum. Citizens' air quality expert, Dr. Clark, concludes that this would result in more severe air quality and transportation impacts than previously analyzed, which require mitigation. Additionally, changes in project design will result in direct and more severe impacts than previously analyzed on wetlands and waters of the United States. The county recognized that the initial project configuration could have an impact on nearby wetlands and consulted with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. The Corps issued a letter in 2016 stating that the project as designed would not require a permit under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act. The county failed to consult with the Corps upon reconfiguring the project's layout, which includes adding a road over an existing drainage. The reconfigured project results in a roadway, feedstock conveyor, and potentially water lines for the industrial processes for the facility to be constructed on the existing drainage on the site. This won't necessarily cause the project to place fill materials into waters of the United States, and as such, must be permitted under the Clean Water Act. After learning about the changes in project design just yesterday, the Corps contacted the county, advising the county that any changes to the project's configuration that will cause fill materials to be placed in waters of the United States must be submitted to the Corps for review and may require a federal Section 404 wetland fill permit before any project construction can begin. The county cannot proceed with the project as planned without consultation with the Corps and without proper mitigation of the project's potentially significant impacts. Finally, the project's MMRP was not adopted as part of the ISMND, resulting in a legally deficient SEQA review. In approving the project, the commission adopted the addendum in reliance on the defective ISMND, and for the first time, attempted to remedy the legally deficient ISMND and by adopting the 2017 MMRP that was missing from the original ISMND, along with that addendum, as part of its 2021 project approvals. These actions, taken together, violate SEQA. The county contends that the ISMND was legally adopted in 2017, regardless of whether or not it contained an MMRP. not it contained an MMRP. However, there is no legal authority to support this position. The MMRP is the heart of a mitigated negative declaration. Without enforceable mitigation measures, there is no mechanism for the lead agency or the public to ensure that the significant impacts identified in the MND are mitigated to less than significant levels. This is outlined in Section 2108.1.6 of the Public Resources Code, which requires the lead agency adopt a reporting or monitoring program for the changes made to the project or conditions of project approval adopted in order to mitigate or avoid significant effects on the environment. Additionally, there is no legal authority allowing the adoption of an MMRP that was intended to be part of a prior document by attaching it to a subsequent addendum. The Court of Appeal recently explained in Farmland Protection Alliance v. County of Yolo that there is nothing in the text of SEQA or common law interpreting SEQA suggesting that a project's impact analysis or mitigation may be divided across different types of environmental review, such that some impacts are analyzed in the mitigated negative declaration and others are analyzed under a different SEQA document. The Commission violated SEQA by using the addendum to remedy the county's failure to adopt the MMRP as part of the original MND, which is required by SEQA. Even if the 2017 ISMND were valid, the county misconstrues the issues on appeal and alleges that the time to challenge the 2017 ISMND has long since passed. However, Citizens takes issue with the 2021 addendum. The issues submitted to the county regarding changes to the project that were raised in our comments, the Planning Commission, and in this appeal demonstrate significant impacts from the project as reconfigured. In closing, even if the ISMND were properly adopted, an addendum would not be the appropriate environmental review document to address the changes in the project. We respectfully request that the Board uphold our appeal, vacate the Commission's decision to approve the project, and require the county to withdraw the addendum to the ISMND and prepare a legally adequate EIR to fully analyze and mitigate the project's potentially significant environmental impacts. Thank you for your time. I'm available to respond to questions from the Board and staff, and I reserve my remaining time for rebuttal. Thanks.
Okay. We've got 15 minutes till 12:30, so continue on. Okay. So is there any other presentation by the public? Is there any question by the Board?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. I believe the applicant would like to make a presentation, so far as I know.
Okay.
May I ask the presenter, Mr. Carmichael, just a quick question?
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael, you mentioned that your, the people you represent are independent. Can you tell me where they are?
They should be on the Zoom call as well.
Any other Board questions right now? Okay. So, okay, so the applicant?
Yes, I believe that the clerk is making the applicant a panelist as well.
Okay. There you are. Go ahead.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, Madam Chair and members of the Board, delighted to be with you again today. I have to say this is the first time I've ever attended one of these on Zoom, and I have to give a huge thanks to the animal control folks, because every time we take a break and I get to watch that loop of all those puppies dressed up in their cute little bandanas, I just, I'm recharged and I'm ready to do this again. So I would encourage the Board to consider taking more frequent recesses. You know, I noticed this morning when, when thinking about this, and I went back and I just, I checked on the computer here that I'm precisely six days shy of the 10-year anniversary of the first activity on this project. The state of California came to us really that long ago to say, hey, we have a crisis in the forest, you know, can you, can you help? And myself and colleagues in industry have been working with communities in the forested areas of this state, you know, since that, since that time. And I confess that I'm embarrassed that it's taken this long, but we are, we are, you know, we are really running out of time, and our sincere request to the Board today is that, that we, that we proceed, we deny the appeal, and we move, we move forward. This project is exactly the same as it was in, in, in the earlier permit. There have been no meaningful changes whatsoever, other, you know, the same engines are pictured. The thing that I find really somewhat troubling is the utter lunacy of the suggestion that we would put silt dirt in a ditch. There is no new road. There's no new thing that the, you know, the ditch was, was there in the beginning. It is there now. It is expressly written on the plan that the conveyance system that, that goes across is to be, I believe it's 14 feet in the air, minimum clearance, because that's the height of the thing that it needs to drop into on the other side. So I don't know where this is, is coming from, but again, from our end, you know, nothing has changed. We are aware that the United States Forest Service is conducting an investigation to see whether this facility can help them with their Caldor Fire issues. They are doing that using their resources with their money and their consultants, and the Forest Service is very partners of ours, and we are, you know, I mean, that is the public purpose with which this entire law that, that established this program was, was created, and we would be proud to serve in that capacity. That said, our fuel plan is the same as it was in the beginning, which is we are focused on the upper moat. It is perhaps restating the obvious that we have a very strong financial incentive to move stuff left, use less fuel, use shorter truck trips. It just, it just, quite frankly, it, it, it works to, it works to everybody's favor. But again, to the, to the statement of our, the person who appealed, there is no road that we are proposing. There is no waterline that we have proposed. There are certainly no fill materials planned to go in, in the ravine in, in question. And yeah, I mean, we would urge the Board to stick to the consideration of the project as the same project before it, and, and to deny the appeal. Thank you very much, and I, I'm certainly here to answer any questions, and our SEQA attorney is also present, along with our environmental consultants, to answer any questions.
The Board, I would like to just add a couple of comments responding, on behalf of Planning, responding to some of the comments made by Mr. Carmichael. Primarily, my primary comment is that he's making an assumption that just because there will be more trees available that need to be removed, that BME is the entity that's going to be automatically removing them all and receiving them, and I think that that is speculation. That was not part of the proposed project. And I don't think that just the possibility of more trees being available to BME, that we can take the leap to say that the project is changed because all of a sudden the Caldor trees are going to be automatically the feedstock used. I don't think that SEQA requires us to look at that type of speculation and consider it a change of circumstances under 15162. And I just wanted to remind the Board that small changes in a project are not enough to trigger a new SEQA document under 15162 unless, given the project as a whole, they will have a substantially, they will result in a substantially worse impact, or that new information, looking at the project as a whole, would significantly worsen an identified impact. So I, I just wanted the Board to see the difference between speculation of possible future problems, another example, drainage through a new pipe. A new pipe is not going to affect a wet one, even if it were the case, and I'm hearing that this is, there isn't going to be a new pipe. It wouldn't affect a wet one unless it broke or leaked. So again, the fact that there's a remote possibility that something bad can happen is not going to trigger a change of circumstance under SEQA. So that, that's basically what I wanted to remind the Board.
Thank you. Is there any Board questions? Okay. There wasn't a break to ask from the previous presentation, so I just wanted to go back. Okay, so next.
Chair Follendorf, I believe, I believe that the attorney for the applicant is here as well.
Oh, okay. Hi.
Hello. Well, it's good afternoon now. This is Christiana Darlington. I am working on this project for the Blue Mountain Electric Company. I have over 20 years of experience representing local government, and I was in-house deputy county counsel for the counties of Mono and Placer in my previous life. So I come to you with some, some depth of experience on these matters, and I really want to just compliment Madeline on a fantastic staff report, really. I've seen many done over my years, and she did a great job. A really important part of this argument, the three main points which the, the appellant has reiterated in its latest letter filed this morning, is first that somehow the fact that they didn't list their mitigation measures on a separate piece of paper means that they didn't do a mitigation monitoring plan. So that is incorrect. I mean, it is an example of an administrative typo type of thing that addendums are used to fix. They had every mitigation measure in the document with their plan, or the way they're going to handle it, how they're going to implement it, is built into the mitigation measure itself. So typically, what's done is people cut and paste all the mitigation measures out, and they put them on a separate piece of paper. Okay, that acting of itself does not undermine the validity of all the mitigation measures that were put into place, and there isn't anything out there in the, in the actual language within SEQA that says that somehow because it wasn't kind of pasted into a separate piece of paper, that it's not still effective and valid. So I wanted to make sure that we understand that the mitigation measures were effective, they were in place, and if you wanted to make the argument that they're making, I think that that's a, it's a weak place to go. The, the second thing that I really wanted to emphasize is that there's no new road. So calling an apple an orange doesn't make it an orange. So what I'm saying to you is that just because they're, they're saying that these facts are occurring, there's no evidence in the record, there's no specific places in, in the design where they're pointing out where there are impacts, because there are no new places where there are changes happening. So there's no new road. And then, and then finally, on feedstock distance, there's plenty of feedstock within a 30, 30-mile radius, okay, of this project, as was used as a basis for determining impacts. And there's only more of it available, but it's all within 30 miles, which was, you know, what was used to determine so, impacts. So I, I think we're good on, on these three main points that they brought up, and I would just say that there are a lot of other reasons why, that have been brought up by staff and by Ms. Lewis and others that support the passing of this project through the gauntlet here and denying this appeal. So I'm happy to answer specific questions. Also, I did submit a letter in writing that addressed a lot of the other points brought up in the November 10th and November 23rd letters, so if you did have any questions from that, I'm also available. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any Board questions after that comment? Otherwise, I'll move on to rebuttal. I believe it's the next.
I'm sorry, public comment would come next, and then each will have the opportunity to speak again.
Okay. Is there any public comment at this time? Yes.
Good morning. My name is Seva from Railroad Flat. Our town has suffered more than a few setbacks over the last 50 years. During that time, our once prosperous Blue Mountain community saw all of our timber mills close. The Railroad Flat and Butte Flyers tore through our town and forests. Many of our young people moved on, looking for work elsewhere. More recently, we experienced the closure of our beloved Railroad Flat Elementary School. The Willseville Biomass Project is a ray of hope in a pretty grim environment, economic setting. If implemented, it would provide local jobs and help fund fuel reduction and forest and watershed restoration projects. It will use environmentally, environmentally sound technology and produce energy and biochar using what used to be thought of as wood waste. I asked the Bay Area-based objectors who are appealing the Planning Commission's 5-0 approval of this project, why would you deal yet another blow to our long hurting town? If this is not responsible development, what is? I respectfully asked, no, I beg, the Board of Supervisors to deny this appeal and let us get on with rebuilding our Blue Mountain communities. Thank you.
Are there any other public comment?
Yeah, okay. My name is Steve Walensky. I've lived in Calaveras County for the last 40 years. The first thing I want to say is what a spectacular job staff did on this. Madeline just unbelievably tour de force, I guess is what I'd call it. That, that really covered virtually every point we wanted to make. I've got a few other things, though, that sort of predate history. I go back a long ways on this. CHIPS started 20 years ago to begin doing this kind of thing. We've deployed and hired many local people to do forest restoration, meadow, cultural site, and watershed work in this area. We have cut all kinds of fire breaks. In fact, the Butte Fire was stopped along one of our fire breaks, and recently, the Hugh 88 project that we cut 40 miles of fuel break along 88 was where the Caldor Fire kind of came to an end, at least on one part of it. Could have easily gone across that, and we'd have been in a world of hurt in Calaveras County if that had happened. This project has been through more scrutiny, has been vetted more thoroughly over more time than just about any other project. Most would have died well before this because of the longevity of the process and the cost of it. We're based locally, and there's nowhere else to go. We've stuck with this. We are tenacious, and we've done everything we know how to do to meet the requirements that have been presented by the following. We have survived five planning directors, four public works directors, three county councils, two public, two environmental health directors, five CAOs, and the following kinds of processes. We started years and years ago doing environmental phases one and two, doing three feasibility studies, doing all kinds of ruleouts. We now know that there are no spotted owls on the former logging site, the timber mill site. We also know that there are no monkey flowers growing in the area. We worked with the Army Corps of Engineers for two years. When they weren't coming up here because they didn't have staff to do it, we worked for a, a for a long time in dialogue and finally came to the conclusion that this trench we're talking about, which was actually the outflow from the original mill pond on the site, which hasn't had water in it for 30 some years, is no longer a waterway. And in fact, it was just water that was taken out of the McCullum River, filling the mill pond when they were dumping logs in there. If you look at the vegetation in the former spillway, you'll note that there is nothing riparian about it, and biologists have checked that, and so ultimately did the Army Corps of Engineers. We've done many other things. We did two major fuel procurement studies. We did three feasibility studies. We did, and I'm going to have to take my notes here with the glasses, they're getting old here. We did soil tests, not once, but twice. We did deep soil tests throughout the project area, and we did shallow soil tests, and nothing came up. We did historic surveys, we had a national... Oh, I'm out of time? Oh geez, all right. Suffice it, I, I won't catalog or bore you with it, but if you look at them, thousands of pages of records and studies, you will find that we have done every single thing that we were asked over a 10-year period. Now comes these interveners from the Bay Area, and they're saying, well, we, you know, suddenly we got no... They don't know a thing about our forests. Every single yard is a log deck around here. We don't have to go more than five miles to get the next 10 years of fuel. And by the way, the previous comments about your thanking your public works department and others, they're picking up another 10 years of biomass in the last storm alone. So come on, let's get real, and let's get on with our work. Thank you. Sorry to overdo my time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can the board recognize the former supervisor, Steve Walensky?
So we let him keep talking because he was a supervisor?
No, but I would like the board to acknowledge, you know that.
Any other public comment? Oh, okay.
Donna Vile from Glencoe. I represent a log deck. I have the biofuels on my property, and I've had it since Beetle Kill. So there are fuels around. These guys don't know of forests, like Steve says. They don't know how environmentally sensitive we are to protecting our watershed. We wouldn't think of polluting a creek. No way. We're very, very sensitive. I'd like to ask them, how are, how sensitive are they? I also represent the school that closed. Yes, our economy is in the toilet. Let's do something about it. You have the power. Thank you, Madeline, for your great presentation. Let's go forward and make this happen.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Jill Michaud, and I live in Calaveras County, but not in this part of Calaveras County. I'm from Arnold, excuse me, Arnold. But I work for CHIPS. I have for about the past seven months, and so I've had lots of occasion to drive into West Point through this part of the county and spend days there. And what I see is a really depressed community. The, the comparison between the Ebbets Pass Corridor and West Point is stark. And I feel that, you know, the, the buildings are in disrepair. Very often when I'm in the office, I have homeless people sleeping on the benches outside and knocking on the door, asking for jobs. This community really needs an input economically, and I feel like this particular project could really breathe new life into the, into the area. So I hope that you will in fact approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ketchup Bennett, and I am the Field Operations Manager for CHIPS. This workforce has a great impact on Native American communities, connects us with our own traditional homelands as some, it connects us spiritually. A lot of this work allows individuals with the communities to stay on an uprising path. It gives kids within our community a different aspect on what life could be, as well as a definition of what hard work looks like. Tribes have been seeing tremendous decreases of the rate of unemployment as well. So it provides us, our communities, with the work to do.
Thank you. Okay, any other?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Thurman Roberts. I worked with CHIPS for the past four years, not only as a ground crew, but also moving into higher administrative support to keep CHIPS functioning and making sure that the jobs and that our workers are happy. This project not only helps to recognize the climate change and its impact on everyday living, but by allowing this project to move forward in a proactively, in a proactive approach to addressing climate change, it gives your communities a chance to build themselves up, to regain some sense of stability. And not only that, but the, the impact to the environment as well, the watersheds, the burnt lands that have been accumulating massive amounts. But my, another, sorry, it's just really important things that, that impact a lot of local people, that someone from outside the area is trying to come in and dictate your choices, your community's choices, your constituents' lives. You guys know what's out there. You see it every day as you drive back and forth, and I'm just asking that you refute the, the gentleman from the Bay Area's appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Is there any online?
Yes, we have two online.
Okay. We'll go online.
George Dondaro?
Yes, good morning. Sorry, I had to unmute. Good morning, supervisors. I, I was the first executive director of the Calaveras Council of Governments from 1998 to 2006. I've worked on many road and highway projects that needed CEQA clearance, including the Highway 4 Angels Camp bypass. But I'm well familiar with the CEQA process. Reading through your staff report and listening to the presentation today, it's clear to me that your staff fully understands CEQA regs and the project in question. Your staff did an excellent job in responding to the appeal. I've been on the CHIPS board for two years, and I'm very proud of the work that we do. The project you are considering today is unique in several ways and deserves your unanimous support. Rarely does a project come before you that will provide triple bottom line benefits in essence, environmental, economic, and community benefits. It's rare that you get all three in one project. Please consider. The project will provide local jobs in an area where unemployment has been painfully high ever since the timber industry closed down the mills. Secondly, it will improve the health of forests through selective thinning. Third, it will help reduce the rapid spread of wildland fires, as has already been mentioned. Fourth, it will help improve the quality of our watersheds. And finally, it will provide electricity and useful wood products to support the local I ask you, how often do you see a project with this much to contribute to our quality of life? Please support the BMEC project and deny the appeal. Thank you.
Second online comment?
Yes, Robert Zellers.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, I'd just like to start by saying thank you to all the, the staff and to the commenters who went before me. All of you hit just about everything I wanted to say. A little bit about me, I'm Calaveras raised. I graduated from Calaveras High School, and right now I'm at the age where I'd be thinking about settling back down, and I want to live in Calaveras. You know, the, the road's let school close, that's where my kids would have been going if I were to move back, because my parents live in Glencoe. I would like to live there, too. But there's no opportunities for someone like me. I have a degree in engineering. My background is civil and environmental engineering. Projects like this start bringing technology and the potential for jobs and a place for kids like me to stay in Calaveras County instead of moving to a big city like I had to, to find a job to do. The other thing I wanted to say is, I've never heard of this appellate before, so I started looking. They've never been to a CHIPS board meeting, they've never reached out to us, they've never been to the Willseville site. So again, I started digging. Citizens for Responsible Industry, as far as I can tell, they don't really exist. They have no presence on the internet, near as I can tell. Instead, they're a subsidiary of a group called California Unions for Reliable Energy. In, at, excuse me, in an article by the LA Times, they are described by three California unions, or they are described with this, this is the opening statements of the article, "Three California unions are accusing a rival labor coalition of using shameful tactics to win exclusive contracts for building renewable power plants. Tactics, they say, delay new jobs and add to each project's costs. Unions representing carpenters, laborers, and operating engineers criticize California unions for renewable energy for challenging construction projects on environmental grounds, then dropping those objections after its main affiliate, the State Building and Construction Trades Council of California, wins lucrative contracts to supply workers." An industry trade group official of the Independent Energy Producers Association of California described CURE as "professional litigants that exploit loopholes in the California Environmental Quality Act." Ladies and gentlemen, that's what I saw here. I saw a bunch of very empty, empty criticisms from the appellate that seems to me like they didn't even bother to do the bare minimum of their homework to understand the amount of work that has gone into this project. I've been on this project for six years in one way or another. I've done all this work. I've been here and seen the effort and the passion of all these people working to make sure that every box is checked, that every concern is dealt with. And here, these people come in, as far as I can tell, from San Francisco, from Southern California, who've never set foot up here, who've never even talked to us about this project, trying to step in here and stop it for no reason other than their phone and This makes me furious. This project here represents a ray, a glamour, a something, a little tiny bit of hope for this community that I have just watched get beaten into the ground with every passing year that I have grown. This is one little ray of hope, and I sincerely hope that you will not let these outside interlopers disrupt it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other online comment?
There is no other online public comment.
Okay. And if there's no other comments in the room, we'll move on to the discussion. We are hitting 1 o'clock here. So I'd like to find out from the board members if they would like to press on or take lunch and then come back with the rebuttals.
Madam Chair, what are the steps? I'm trying to know how close we are to the end.
So you're gonna have to help me here. We're not at rebuttal, right?
So the appellate has an opportunity for summation and rebuttal, then the applicant has the same opportunity, then staff has an opportunity to, for the same summation and rebuttal. Then there's another public comment period, if anyone wants to take advantage of that, and then it comes back to the board for any questions, discussion, and a vote.
And I would assume that, I'm sorry, and I would assume that our appellate has some rebuttal, and everybody's got more to say on this, or gonna wrap this thing up?
I'm seeing head shake.
Yeah, it does. Looks like Mr. Carmichael's got more to say.
Is there, is there a time limit on the comments?
So any, the board procedures provide that any summation and rebuttal would be limited to a maximum of 15 minutes each.
Chair, I would guess that seeing as Mr. Carmichael is gonna dig into every rule he can to overturn this, I think we should probably take every step to avoid...
Yeah, we need to take every step. It's just a question of, do we want to break now or press through? And I'm thinking we might want to take a break. But I want to get the board...
With time constraints and concerns with staff and, and lunch timing and everything, I think it's a good idea to take a break at this time.
Yeah.
Although I would like to get it done also, Mr. Gueramendi.
I would too, but so what do you say, we break from now until 2 o'clock? It's an hour and 15 minutes.
Yes. Okay, we'll be back at 2.
So be it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Welcome back. Hope everyone had a good lunch. So, sir, you're gonna have to remind me, I believe now we are at the rebuttal, correct?
Yes, we just, we concluded public comment, and now it's the opportunity for the appellate to, you know, make a summation or rebuttal.
So, Mr. Carmichael, you are up?
Great, thank you so much.
Do I need, sorry, do I need to reopen a public hearing? Or are we still continuing?
Don't we be close there?
Okay, then we're good.
It's ongoing, it's ongoing public hearing, yes.
I just wanted to make sure that I didn't have to do another...
My apologies.
Okay, okay, then we're good. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Carmichael.
No, no problem. Hello, my name is Kevin Carmichael with Adams Broadwell, Josephine Cardozo. Thank you for the opportunity to provide additional comments. I would just like to briefly respond to statements made by staff, board members, and members of the public regarding Citizens' appeal and members. I'd first like to respond to some of the ad hominem statements voiced by staff and the public about our clients. Citizens is not a group of Bay Area organizations trying to stop the project. Citizens is comprised of local residents and local labor organizations with dozens of members residing in Calaveras County. Citizens' members want to see clean projects and good jobs in Calaveras County. Many of Citizens' members are unable to attend the meeting today as it occurs during their workday. Some of the coalition's local members who live in the county and filed this appeal include Austin Bordinave, Courtney Collins, Cody Craven, Cameron Fall, Kelly McBee, Chad Melton, Paul Enderman, Joshua Pollan, Patrick Young, and Lars Carminson. These members and all of Citizens' members support renewable energy development in the county that complies with environmental and public health laws and provides benefits to the community. This project does not meet these standards and should not be approved until it does. Our clients are also committed to resolving the environmental issues raised in our written comments and at the hearing today, and we are seeking to have those issues addressed on their merits. Citizens' interest is to ensure that projects are good, both for the environment and for the local economy. They never have and never will withdraw their comments or walk away from the environmental issues they have raised, whether or not there is a jobs agreement. Regarding the onsite drainage, the biological report to the ISMND states that there are a few potentially...
a few potentially jurisdictional waters of the U.S. and wetlands at the site. However, as our biologist has explained, the description of the ditch leaves little doubt that it is indeed a jurisdictional feature because it has well-defined bed and bank, evidence of surface flow, and connectivity to the McComme River. Furthermore, even if none of these features are federally jurisdictional, they are waters of the state and also jurisdictional under Section 1602, the California Fish and Game Code. Finally, regarding the feedstock availability, it is not speculation to point out that the staff report states that feedstock availability has increased from wildfires in the area. The county must prepare an EIR to analyze the impacts of all sources of feedstock that may reasonably be used to supply the project. The project does not contain a condition of approval that limits the project to only receive feedstock from the feedstock availability study area. Therefore, the only way to disclose and mitigate potentially significant impacts from increased truck trips by the project is to address these new facts in an EIR. I'm available to answer any further questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any board questions? Nope, okay. Next is staff rebuttal, right?
Uh, no, I need to give the applicant an opportunity and then staff.
I'm reading this and it has, I'm sorry. Applicant, you're next.
Okay, sound good, believe me. Uh, this is new, new to us. Whoops. Uh, I appear to have, uh, lost the video, but hopefully, uh, we will continue briefly and that will either work itself out or, oh, yeah, I was gonna say, I'm wearing my wife's Christmas gift, so I, I need you all to, uh, to see that. Um, look, I, I'd just like to say first, again, we are humbled and so unbelievably thankful for, uh, the community members who, who showed up today because as I was kind of joshing that I had been working on this for, I think I'm six days shy of 10 years, the community has been at it for, for that much longer. And, 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 you know, we take our role very seriously, and getting this thing in the end zone is what we do, it's why we're, uh, here. And so our commitment to that community is exactly, exactly that. This has been a project that we have been doing in partnership with the local community. This project has been part of the plan for the talent of Willseyville, for the ACCG. Uh, you, you know, I mean, it is just, we've been around, uh, for a while. We are incredibly indebted to staff for the great work that they have done throughout this entire process. And, you know, it's, it's funny, we, we, you know, I've been an environmentalist my whole life. I mean, I, I, I swallow hard to, to not, uh, get offended about insinuations that we somehow, uh, are, are careless and, uh, I, I just, I have appreciated staff and their diligence throughout. Um, there are certain realities that the appellate is ignorant of. Fire creates more feedstock whether we desire it or not. That's just how a forest works. We've been in the forestry space for a long, long, long time. I did not have gray hair when I started this project. Not the only reason I had it, but, but nonetheless, fire means more feedstock. Whether we get it from five miles away, or 50 miles away, or 500 feet away, I cannot change the fact that every time there is a forest fire, more fuel comes off the land. It is the nature of the forest. Uh, we live with fire every day. Nothing in this is new. The very reason this program exists, the very reason the law that establishes our ability to be in this space exists is to make a difference in fire mitigation and wildfire, catastrophic wildfire risk reduction. It's why we're here. Uh, and, and finally, again, to, to the, I, I was kidding my attorney over the break that I just absolutely love that line about just because you call an apple an orange does not make it an orange. I'm stealing her, her thunder. We don't touch the waterway. We never have touched the waterway. We don't plan to touch the waterway. We're not gonna touch the waterway. Whether it is a jurisdictional waterway or not, we don't have anything to do with it. Uh, it shall not be touched. It has never planned to be touched. I can't even foresee an economic justification for touching it in the first place. That the appellate has suggested to the federal government, we intend to put fill in the dirt. I mean, it just, it forms on stupid. I, it's just no logical reason why that would occur. Um, and, and with that, I should, uh, I should re-center and, and, and again, thank everybody involved in this process, express my deep, deep thanks to the community for its support over the last 10 years, and renew my commitment that we will see this thing done. Uh, thank you very much, and, and now I have, I believe our, our attorney has some legal points to respond to, and we remain available for comment. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg. I don't have much to add. I just wanted to point out that the fact that fuel is available doesn't mean that the plant is any larger. It's gonna still use the same amount of feedstock as it was planning on using back in 2017. The equipment's the same, the needs the same. There's plenty of feedstock available within the 30-mile radius. There's not gonna be longer truck trips because there's plenty of wood in the area right near where the facility is. So I really don't see this as needing additional analysis or that it has any potential to change the level of significance to any of the mitigation measures. I would just encourage the board to make the findings that are based on CEQA, meaning that there has been no significant change to this project that result in a higher level of impacts, and that, um, so therefore, an addendum is the proper analysis for this action and to approve the project and move forward. And thanks again, and of course, I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
And just briefly, um, board, I would like to, um, Bill, I agree with, Bill, I want Mr. Darlington said, I agree with what Mr. Stengel and Ms. Darlington said. I just want to also add that this project, um, was designed after the fire took place. And so the impact of fires and the availability of feedstock and how that might impact transportation impacts are all information that was available, uh, prior, um, to the adoption of the ISMND. And there is nothing in CEQA that says every time there's a new fire, you have to do a new EIR to evaluate the changes to the feedstock. That's just not going to rise to the level of a significant change under CEQA. Just wanted to add that.
Okay. Is there any questions by the board?
I do have a question for Mr. Stengel.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Stengel, um, we talked about employment and employees. I didn't, I didn't get a number from you at the total number of employees at full speed that you would have.
At, at full speed, and I, I really speak only to the plant itself because that is my expertise. There are obviously follow-on, uh, jobs that are created in the forest as a result of our existence, but at full speed, we would likely have about 15 people fully employed by the plant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, you know, being, growing up in District Two and, you know, the McComme Hill Railroad Flat area, you know, all my life, uh, that, that, that area is phenomenal. Um, I'm not sure topography, which way it goes, whether it's Calaveras or the McComme watershed up there. With, with that said, I'm familiar with the area and it's, it's, uh, you know, beneficial moving forward with fuel reduction, um, you know, our bark beetle mitigation and, and other stock going through there. We're, we're going through, uh, a study, feasibility study also with Central Sierra Economic Development District. And, you know, there's projects like this, because if we also leave that stuff out in the forest and we don't deal with it, there's a certain methane production, or we end up putting it in our landfills, which also has, has setbacks. So, right now, with that said, with the facts that, that are presented, um, I, I'm real
You have more comments?
I know, I'm not.
Okay.
Okay. I'll drop it at that right now, but.
Okay. Are there any, are any other questions specifically to the rebuttals? Then I'll move it to staff comments is next, correct, sir?
Uh, yes, to the extent that staff wants to, um, provide a summation or rebuttal any of the points made by the appellate or applicant, this would be their opportunity, and then there's a final opportunity for public comment.
Is there any other staff comment before I take it to public?
I do not have anything.
Okay. So with that, I'm gonna take it to the public comment. Are there any online?
Yes, we have Mr. Zellers again. Mr. Zellers?
Good afternoon. Uh, first thing I'd like to point out is that I appreciate the, the board chair stepping in on her first day with such a contentious issue. Um, talk about a trial by fire. I, I'd like to start by addressing the whole ad hominem thing that Mr. Carmichael started with. I'm sorry, but I'm gonna call that faith actor a bad faith actor. I mean, it, it seems to me that your knowledge of this project demonstrates that you didn't actually do this homework. You, you've kinda like stepped in here, haven't known any of the background work that's been done, um, and like, I don't, what's, what's your next step? Why are you here? If you lose this appeal, what happens next? Uh, I, I, I'm really concerned because right now I'm looking at a list of dozens of projects that your law firm has intervened on, and they're all behind, um, you know, organizations like San Jose Residents for Responsible Development, Davis Residents for Responsible Development, Redding Residents for Responsible Development, Antelope Valley Residents for Responsible Development. So why are you here? Um, and, and then on top of that, who are these, who are these local individuals? Like, you've named some people and said, oh, they can't take the time off of work. I'm taking the time off of work to be here. So, I, I mean, is this like a, where do they come from? Where are they? Why aren't they here? Why aren't they giving public comment? Why have not, why haven't we heard from them? That's the next thing. And then the last thing I'd like to touch on, even though it's been beaten to death already, is this environmental review by the biologist. Has he ever actually been to the site? Because from the description that I've heard, it sounds like he hasn't. It sounds like he's looked at an image off of Google Earth that was taken in the spring and then made a decision from there. Because you know what? That's exactly what the Army Corps did with the original letter that was, when we were dealing with this, original letter from the Army Corps. And you know how I know that? Because I'm the guy who did that. I'm the guy who worked with the Army Corps to resolve that issue. I've been to the site. I've looked at it. There is no waterway. There are no wetlands there. And if that's a fight that's gonna go down, it's a fight that you're gonna lose because what, the only drainage that's there is the original, like, drainage from the lumber mill pond. That's it. There's no wetlands. There's nothing there. And it says to me that the biologist who did this review doesn't know what they're talking about. Um, and then finally, the last thing I'd like to point on is like, like, I'm a union guy. My dad was a union truck driver. He's a guy who put food on the table because of the union job. Uh, more than that, I'm also an environmentalist, and that's exactly what this project is supposed to do, too, is address like good paying jobs in the construction phase, in the maintenance phase, and in like the, the operational phase of this project, and address environmental concerns. So my last question is, we're theoretically working towards the same goal, so why are you stepping in in opposition to this project rather than collaboratively? We are aiming towards the same thing. So why aren't you helping us? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment online?
There's no further online public comment.
Is there any other comment in the room? Nope. With that, sir, according to this, I will bring it back to the board of supervisors, correct? Ken? Bring it back to the board for further comment, discussion, questions for any of these. So Supervisor Stopper? Supervisor Garamendi?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And, um, I wanted to do a special thank you to Madeline and Julie, Gina, and Sarah, who've done just phenomenal piece of work on this. Thank you very much. Uh, the presentation was great. Legal analysis was thorough. I didn't miss a step, and I really admire your work. Thank you very much. This is an incredibly important project for, for, for our whole county, I think, in particular for my district, which, um, my district is over a forest and, and perhaps less advantaged than other districts. This is a, um, I wanna, you know, to Mr. Zellers' point, I really do want to invite the appellate's and Mr. Carmichael in particular to come on up and see the site, the, the community, see the people who will be impacted should this project continue to be challenged. Because it will, it hurts people, puts their lives at risk, puts their families at risk. These are people who need this work, and they need the safety, and they can't, can't our forests can't provide. I, I've read Mr. Carmichael's background. I don't think he's a bad guy. He's done good things at Bradley fellow, UC Davis. And I don't think he wants to hurt people who need to be helped. I think unions have been built around helping people who need to be helped. I don't think they're built around destroying communities, about building communities. So I challenge them and I offer them the opportunity to become partners in this progress in making things better in, in a, in a very disadvantaged community, in a very disadvantaged county. Our staff, this, this is taking tremendous resources for BME to defend. It's taking huge amounts of time for our staff. We don't have people lying around looking for projects everybody here is working on. And everybody here also knows that this is important. So this has come at great cost to this county and to this project. We need to get this done. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution denying the appeal as before us.
A motion on the table?
If I may, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if you just wanna close the public hearing before the board votes.
Close the public hearing. There's a motion on the table. Supervisor Stopper?
Um, thank you, Mr. Garamendi. I couldn't have said it much better myself. Very good motion. Um, some of the points I was trying to get to earlier, with that, I'd like to second Mr. Garamendi's motion and thank everyone for the work they've gone, gone through to this point.
There is.
Read us three, please.
When I read the appeal, there was something that stuck out, excuse me, was the citizens is a coalition of labor organizations with members who may be adversely impacted by worker self and safety hazard. So that was a key for me to listen and to read what it was for them. Worker safety is covered by Cal OSHA, so I knew that would be taken care of. There is an air quality mitigation monitoring report. These issues have been dealt with. The wetlands issue had been dealt with. The hazardous materials issue had been dealt with. The ISMND dealt with their quality.
Nothing to report at this time, Madam Chair.
And I have nothing to report. So with that, everyone have a good day.